Call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll? Counselor Drier. Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Counselor Merity.
Who's it?
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Stenit.
Here.
Mayor Solzner.
Here. Item three, public meetings and records training.
Evening. Hi. So we get to continue what we started a morning a while ago. And I'm happy that Counselor Irvin can hear him because I recall one of the reasons we stopped was because Counselor Fleck and Counselor Irvin had to leave. It was the end of the meeting, but there were some questions that we wanted to address. And I went through my materials and I apparently didn't write it down. So I'm hoping that everybody can remember the questions that they had as we get to the public meetings and records portion. So without further ado, let's jump in. Public meetings that are subject to the law for your body is four. So a quorum equals four of you whenever you're together and discussing city business. Buzz phrases deliberate and decide matters that pertain to city business. But just imagine if you're at an ice cream social and four of you are sort of congregated and you start talking about things that you have in common, which is city business. So just be really careful, stay away from that four-letter word, city, and talk about dogs or anything else. This carries over, and all of you I know are really well-versed now in what is a unlawful public meeting, but it bears repeating that conversations, as they occur via phone, texts, emails, IMs, Facebook posts, et cetera, all of those now can only be deemed public meetings, especially if they're serial, public meetings, serial communications that state something about city business, build on that in the next post or response. So anytime that a quorum of you are meeting and discussing city business, the things that we want to have, that we want to make sure have happened already, is that the meeting has been noticed. So that members of the public know that you're going to be talking city business so that they can come and listen, that the space is ADA accessible and within your jurisdiction. Cities, public entities these days that are trying to maximize city resources or public resources are having joint meetings. And just know those joint meetings need to occur within one of the geographic boundaries of the entities. So you could ostensibly need outside of the city, the city of Cottage Grove, for joint meeting purposes. Voting, a majority of a quorum can usually pass most city business. So if four of you are together, three of you can decide many issues that are posed to the council. Now, your charter makes an exception to replacing, filling a vacancy, council vacancy, passing ordinances, appointing city manager and the municipal judge. Those are the exceptions. Those would require a majority of your councils. So you would need more counselors there to take those important actions. But regular city business can be a healthy by three of you. Records minutes. Thank you, Mindy. We have a, your city reporter takes care of you with regard to records, and we'll talk about those in the next portion of this training. And then public attendance. So because, I don't know if it's because of COVID, but during COVID, beginning of COVID, the law was changed and it requires cities now to allow not only in-person attendance, but also virtual attendance. And to the extent that individuals present can participate and communicate with you, that same ability needs to be granted to individuals appearing virtually. And y'all have worked hard. We were just talking about this virtual platform that allows people to attend and participate. But it does require that technological edge. And so you will just be prepared, and I know that you've experienced citizens expressing some frustration if I try to get in. Your city attorney tries to get in sometimes, can't get in, have to try a couple times. So I know that can be frustrating. You know, I meant to start by asking, does anybody have questions? What we covered in the prior portion of this training was counselor authority and ethics. And I just, I'm going to pause before I move to the next slide to see if anybody had any questions about anything on that. Okay, all right, sorry about that. Okay, so the next slide. There are a number of different kinds of meetings that are all public meetings. Some are governed by Oregon meetings laws, and some are set up in your charter and council rules. So your regular meetings are required by your charter and clarified by your council rules. Agenda sessions are addressed only in your council rules. And it's interesting because regular meetings doesn't mention anything about public participation. Agenda sessions, work sessions, both say, they're both functions of your council rules, and neither allow public participation. Public attendance, yes, public participation, no. Special meetings is a beast of the Oregon meetings laws. It requires at least 24 hours notice in advance. And emergency meetings can be called on less than 24 hours' notice, but not for self-created emergencies. For instance, contracts that nobody's been paying attention to but have a termination date, and all of a sudden you're not going to have HVAC system service, and it, you know, it's been expired for a week, and the council says, oh, we have to hurry up and renew that. Well, that's a self-created emergency. So that wouldn't legitimize an emergency meeting. On the other hand, a flood needing to adopt or approve contracts that are going to allow your roadways to be open after a flood or a natural disaster does qualify. Yes.
So even if the council agrees that it's okay to meet, we, like, the HVAC situation, then we can, but it's not required, like?
If you've agreed to meet, I would tell you, you can't have an emergency meeting, but you can call a special meeting.
A special meeting, okay.
And then you just provide at least 24 hours' notice.
So it has to be 24 hours?
For a special meeting. Emergency, you know, we just had snow in the Gettysburg, and everybody needs to meet virtually that morning. You would be able to do that, I would say that. You didn't create this, nobody asked for the snow. Even if you did a snow dance, you know, I wouldn't hold you responsible. Okay. So moving to the next slide.
We were, Counselor Irvin and I happened to show up at a public information meeting and discussing with a couple topics about mainstream revitalization.
So that's less than a quorum. That's just two of you. And hopefully, it's not the two of you talking to each other, but you are having your conversations with individual members of the public. So I would just recommend separate a little bit so it doesn't look like you're a subcommittee of the council that are there to represent the council. Instead, you're just there.
Sometimes we did end up in the same group of discussions.
And key is, you don't want to then meet with two others in separate meetings on the same subject because now you have a serial.
So I think this is, the point of the training is to alert you, like, ooh, I need to be careful. And look, we've now merged back together again, so it's time to sort of step away and have individual conversations. So no one's overhearing the other conversation or participating in it. And again, two isn't a problem. That's not an unlawful meeting. But as Counselor Fleck points out, you're, you're starting down the road to allow somebody to point and say, hey, that was a serial meeting.
And you don't have to meet with somebody else on the council. You can text or you can call.
Well, yes. And so that's a great point because you could be thinking, I don't want to have left the rest of the council out of this conversation I just had. It's important, it's my duty to inform everybody of this conversation we just had so nobody feels like they're not up to speed or informed. And no good deed goes unpunished. So please don't do that and just take notes if it's something you want to share with the council, bring it back to the next meeting, and let everyone know there publicly, I've had this conversation, I spoke with a citizen, I was at this.
Usually when we ended up together was because we were wanting to hear what the citizen was saying, so that we could make them report.
So as long as you're not responding and you're just information gathering, that's, you know, each one of those is just a step away from building towards an unlawful public meeting. But I just want everyone, each of you individually, to be really conscientious when you are out in public and talking city business, who's around, what's the, what could be, you know, and there's, there's the public meetings issue, there's also the public perception matter where they think businesses, city businesses being taken care of outside of public meetings. Those are pretty important, although the public meeting one is still legally problematic one.
Just be careful, don't then text Counselor Fleck and say, oh, here's what this person said at this meeting, and then he'd turn around and text the mayor or Counselor Stenit, and then he'd create a meeting.
Counselor Savage.
That was actually my question. So the question, if you're talking mainstream revitalization with your group of councilors and that in itself is not a problem, but then say, I used to work on Main Street, Mayor Solzner works on Main Street, so then they have questions for potentially the two of us, would that then create a war?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
And if I can jump in, the only exception to that is land use where ex parte contact comes into play. So if we are a quasi judicial board where either we're, a planning commission decision's been appealed to us, or there's something ongoing at the planning commission, if we have information the rest of the councils have, we then have what's called ex parte contact. And so I try to avoid that like crazy because otherwise you have to declare that in a meeting, you know, to the rest of the body, and it just gets really complicated.
So, yes, exactly. So the point there is that not, in the land use context, not only conversations amongst four of you can be a public meetings violation, but conversations that you're having with anybody outside of the record, outside of the hearing context, needs to be brought back into the hearing, shared with the applicant, so the applicant can process what you learned.
Counselor Irvin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question is, does this pertain to items that are to be deliberated and voted on and discussed in the future? Does it pertain to items that have already been discussed and voted on in the past as well?
It's, well, I mean, technically, it's issues that are going to be before you that have yet to be decided. But because issues that you've decided could come back before you, I don't want you having to make that argument to a court saying, this was something that was in the past and has already been decided, therefore, four of us can discuss it outside of a public context. Does that make sense? I draw a pretty broad circle around city business rather than trying to get nitty-gritty.
Yeah, I, I wonder, because I try to make it a practice to, you know, have people representing, while not talking about like specific items certainly that are coming. It's hard not to talk about anything that affects the city living. So that's, it's a little.
It is difficult. Are you talking about members of the public coming to your house for dinner, or are you talking about counselors coming to your house for dinner? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Well, I mean, everyone's welcome, so counselors included.
So if it's counselors, please stick to your families, your pets, your cars, your home repair, anything like that, that nobody could claim you were actually conducting city business outside of the public meeting context.
Carrie, wouldn't you say, though, that the length of your deliber, or the extent of your deliberations would also probably be reflected in the violation, the fine that would come from the ethics violation? You know, so if you're just talking about general stuff as opposed to the handy decision where they clearly went around and got a majority of the people to vote, I'm going to vote this way. I mean, that was a clear violation because they had intent to actually influence the decision as opposed to just having general conversations, you know, around the general subjects. And I think that that's one of those areas that we've lost as elected officials because we can't have general conversations without this fear now of, you know, violating these rules where, I have to tell you, some of the time I think it's really beneficial for us to have some general conversations, you know, from a 50,000-foot view, not, you know, I'm going to vote this way on this item, but, you know, just how you feel the city should go. I think that that's really a missing piece anymore.
I agree. And, and there are some city attorneys who will say you could still have one-on-one caucuses to iron out either differences or try to understand different perspectives. I think technically, if it's limited to two of you and you're not on a committee, aren't going to run afoul of the public meetings law, but I, it makes me really uncomfortable to say, go for it. I want everybody to be really cautious. And you also, you mentioned Government Ethics Commission. They don't enforce the general public meetings laws. They enforce violations of the executive session laws. Which we're segueing straight to, so thank you. So the prior slide was that list of the different kinds of public meetings, city public meetings. Executive sessions are a special kind that are governed by the public meetings laws. They are held, it gets a little confusing because sometimes people think, well, you're just calling an executive session. But no, you open a general public meeting, and then the council goes into executive session, only under certain narrow, limited circumstances for narrow conversations. And we always need to double-check that we are addressing all of the elements required for different types of executive sessions. Once you have legally gone into executive session, you have to remember no final decisions can be made. There can be a consensus, just a general consensus expressed, as long as when you come into open session, the, the city's not going to move forward unless and until in open session, a motion is made and clarifies what exactly is being authorized. The media can attend with the exception of labor negotiations. And the way that that happens is that the mayor invokes the right to exclude, to limit media reporting. So the media can attend, they're not allowed to report, as long as you put into the record the script that says, members of the public are asked to leave, media can attend, but are asked not to report on the substance of this executive session. And then just remember that if you go outside the bounds of that executive session, suddenly you've given free rein to media to report on arguably the whole conversation, not just the parts that are outside the executive session limits. Please, once executive session is held, don't go outside of executive session and feel like, again, it's your duty as a counselor to inform the public, oh, this is all what we're talking about. It actually was called for, the point of keeping the discussion and the deliberations private so that you get information that's important for your decision-making that is, would put the city on, in an unfair position if it was made public. For instance, litigation, really important for the city to be able to make decisions with regard to litigation without letting the other side know what it's, what those negotiations have entailed. So the examples, just, there's about seven different types of executive sessions. Only three are listed here, kind of the most misunderstood versions or exemptions. The employment myth, I regularly ask, we want to go into executive session to discuss an employment matter. Like, well, there's three different types of ways you can discuss an employment matter, but they're really limited and they all have preconditions before you can go into them. So don't expect you can just go in and discuss personnel matters. Discussions with legal counsel, that's only threatened or filed litigation. So again, many times I'm asked to attend an executive session just because they want to talk about something with me, and I have to explain to them, just because you're talking to me and maybe asking for some legal guidance, that doesn't qualify for an executive session. You know, you all know, I talk a lot in public, as it should be. And then exempt public records, if you do want to talk about legal risks in the executive session, I am able, or the other legal counsel is able to write out an assessment of risks and facts to allow you to weigh various options and decide based on that written communication, how do you want to move forward? Of course, the decision, again, would happen in the open session. But the most important thing is if you're meeting an executive session to discuss and exempt public record, you do not stray outside the four corners of that document. Then that's waiving your rights to an executive session. And I, please, really carefully say, I know that that's related, but that is not in my letter, and I'm just stopping that conversation.
To give me an example to a media giving information from a public, from an executive session. In a previous city, we were in executive session, and I believe we were talking about labor negotiations. Came out of executive session, the meeting ended, everybody left the room, and the newspaper reporter then started asking council members about how they felt on what we were talking about on the labor negotiations. What do you feel on the wages? And ended up getting someone to basically say what they talked about in executive session. She then could report on everything. So be careful when you leave, that you don't, they'll say, I think she started out, I don't understand what we're talking about here on this issue. Boom. Everything they explained to her was in public record.
Because she was in the meeting, and so.
Yeah. So be careful, not saying that any of our media would do that here, but it's happened in other places.
Right, right. Savvy and sneaky. And one of the ways that we try to remind you that, you know, the conversation has ended is if we've distributed exempt public records, I like collecting them at the end, as sort of, and we're done with that conversation, it's out of your hands, we're not talking about it anymore.
Carrie, before you move on, I have a quick question, too, about what you were talking about earlier. So say that two counselors are on the radio, and we talk about a gamut of things. And then one of the counselors wants to talk to another counselor. Would that be, you know, even though, like, we've discussed a bunch of things, but then the next thing would just be a one-on-one meeting, and counselor's brave to talk? And even though they, you know, they haven't even discussed what they're going to talk about, would that be considered a serial meeting?
I guess I'm not completely following. So two counselors have talked about matters on the radio, and then a third counselor wants to.
Yeah, and then, and then, does that limit us so that we?
Oh, okay. So assuming that I'm right, that you've got two counselors and then a third that's stepping in, and the, either of those, of those two have no idea what the conversation is going to be about. So I, I mean, we're all respectful and smart. And so we, I think just before engaging in a conversation, it would be to say, I'm happy to talk with you, meet with you, let's go for a coffee, whatever. I can't, we're not going to talk about city business, right? We're not going to talk about X, Y, and Z. And I just want to be super clear, set the parameters so that everybody knows in advance what is, you know, I'm open, I'm accessible to you. I also am setting these boundaries so that neither of us get in trouble. So moving on to practical tips, the do's. Mayor works with staff to set a realistic agenda. We've all been involved in, despite our best intentions, we've been involved in those meetings that go till 11:30 midnight, and nobody makes good decisions that late at night. Nobody can absorb information, or, you know, I lose my talking ability. I'm bad enough as it is. But, you know, articleteness goes out, emotions run high, you know, sticking to a realistic agenda, or even being willing to say, it's 10:30, let's just stop. It's a really helpful service to each other and circulating, reviewing materials in minutes in advance. You can do that, and then make sure that you have it in advance. Staff works really hard to get agenda, item summaries, and council memos to Richard, it's reviewed and sent out early so that you can be prepared and the public knows what you're going to be talking about. Keeping it formal, so that's a, I, I, I believe that you shouldn't engage, you shouldn't let everything devolve. You don't want many conversations going back and forth. You don't want conversations between yourselves or the, and/or the public. So I don't want you to go overboard, keeping it formal, but we also just want to make sure that there's set protocol. Your rules help you do that, your standard procedures help you do that. Know the council rules, we'll be talking about those Friday morning. Decide how and when public may participate. That is really part of the council rules and also kind of your standard protocol, what people are accustomed to doing and how they're accustomed to participating. Once it's set up, of course, going back to the keeping it formal, stick with those rules. You have parameters and boundaries around who gets to participate when, and staying consistent makes a lot of sense for everybody. Using work sessions is great. You guys do that a lot to make sure that counselors and the public are well-informed in advance for decisions that are made, and nothing feels rushed, nobody feels like they have to make a decision without proper information and without questions answered. Restating the vote, Madam Mayor, that is your job, and it's really helpful for everyone to know what, what did we just decide? And it's really helpful for Mindy, it's also helpful for staff, especially if you can clarify what sort of staff follow-up is required. A lot of times, there's general conversation, a vote is taken, it moves on, and staff's kind of looking at each other, not in the city, but in many cities or districts, and they're like, is that done, or are we bringing this back, or, you know, do I have follow-up that's being required of me? And then just always, we're public officials, please have conversations in public. Things that we normally don't air publicly, we do here. That's your job. And a lot of us are uncomfortable speaking publicly, and it's just, it's just something that you become comfortable with as a counselor. I think that's all.
Yes.
There's another question from Richard. How would it be received if we said, you know, I'm exhausted, wiped, it's 10:30, 11? I mean, there have been meetings lately, and a lot of times they get late because they're important, so, I mean, let's.
I mean, that's, that's for you as a council to kind of determine. I mean, when we do the budget committee meetings, usually at the beginning of those, we always say, hey, at nine o'clock, we're going to break and see if we're just about done or finished right away there and come back. And there are cities, and you've probably seen in packet of council rules, looking at, there are some that say our meetings end at nine o'clock or at 9:30, and we're done. And so, I mean, you can set that parameter, how do you want to do those? And I would, I would say, don't, I mean, we don't know what we did earlier in the day. I mean, you could have been working all day, and you come to a council meeting, and 10 o'clock goes around, everybody else is fine, they're ready to stay up till 11 because they're going to watch the news, but you're dead tired, and you need to share that. Don't, don't hesitate sharing that with the other council members. Say, hey, you know, I've got a busy day, it's been lots of work, I'm tired, I can't make any more decisions. Can we postpone this? Can we stop here and come back at the next meeting? And don't, don't hesitate. Want to be careful? And I'll throw this out there, don't do it to be political, don't do it for an issue that you don't want to talk about. That will show through. But, you know, if there's, if there's an honest reason that, hey, this is just too much, I mean, some of our Walmart stuff many years ago, and the Speedway many years ago, and some of those meetings went really long, and they got to a point, and I think a couple of them, where the mayor just said, hey, I'm tired, how's everybody else? Let's do this at the next meeting. So don't. So, don't hesitate.
We had a couple of four hours.
Yeah.
In the past years.
Yeah, yeah.
It seemed like it would, it would kind of take into account a need to, you know, what's the next meeting? Can we postpone this? I mean, it just seemed like some of these you know are going to be...
Right, and sometimes they just have to be, so, yeah.
Land use is one of those circumstances where you have 120 days and you need to have issued a final decision, and so, you could really be over a barrel. And those tend to, you know, if it's appealed to you, that means that somebody cares a lot about this, and you're probably going to have a lot of public testimony. So, there are circumstances where you really wouldn't want to stop. But most other things, it's like I was getting comfortable having discussions in public, the reason is because we want the public to know why you are deciding the way you are, and if people are tired and not able to discuss the issue fully, it's not serving anyone, you or the public, to push a decision through, just to have it done.
And there, I mean, the council, as any member of the council, you can actually say, hey, I think we need a recess. I mean, if you have to take a little break, you know, speak up and do those, that's, that's an item that, under Robert's rules, can pop up at any time, that, hey, we need to take a recess, and refresh, and come back in 15 minutes, or whatever, so, yeah.
In contrast, adjourning would be everybody's.
And we don't want a table, because Roberts does get a little tricky around that. We want to postpone, we do not want a table.
And that goes to the keep it formal, and it gets really formal then, so, yeah.
So, it would be, it would be a vote, though, to adjourn.
Right. Somebody would say, you know, I'd like to really do, pause, or come back next meeting and move forward with the rest of the items on the agenda, or the rest of this discussion, and take a motion in a second, and a vote.
Okay, so, the public meetings, practical tips, don'ts. Of course, these are not necessarily legal tips, except that these kind of are. Avoid replying to emails and texts when city business, city business information is being shared. So, you're getting information from the city manager in preparation for a future meeting, and if somebody hits reply to discuss, or hits reply all, it's even worse. Again, always the best intentions at heart, everybody, you know, you don't want to leave somebody out, you want to make sure that everybody is on the same page, but you don't want to do that.
And we're trying to remember to put that in the blind copy, so that if you do reply, you can't reply to all, but sometimes we put it in and just address it and send it out, so don't reply all, but, yeah.
To Counselor Irvin's question, here are some of the lines. Avoid conversations in person, email or text between counselors where views of a fellow counselor are shared, and avoid sharing firm opinions or views on items the council will vote on. So, you can see, the first one's a little broader, it's your perspective, it's your thoughts, it's your beliefs, that's how you might vote. And then the second is firm opinions on things that are actually coming before you. So, that's, those are, those are the guidelines that we ask you to follow, just to stay very safe. This one, I'm going to skip virtual public meetings, practical tips, that was really for when, I mean, I know that we're still meeting virtually occasionally, but I have gone over this with you for the last two or three years, so, and I can see with the headphones that everybody's following my advice, so, other people aren't participating. So, social media, don't discuss matters with other counselors over social media, unintentional quarrels, deliberations, or decisions could constitute an unlawful public meeting, and that's handy, Counselor Fleck also already mentioned the handy decision. I do want to point out that in handy, one of the exceptions that the court talked about was purely administrative matters, such as scheduling meetings, times and places of meetings. That's not substantive, they didn't find those serial emails constituted a meeting, a public meeting. And the legislature is currently considering an amendment to the public meetings laws to sort of codify handy in that respect. So, keep your eyes open, those of you who have been participating Fridays on legislative updates, have probably already heard about that. Next slide. Avoid posting comments, I feel like we've just covered this very carefully, so, let's move forward, and we also have about 20 minutes, and we haven't gotten to public records yet. So, individual media posts, we mentioned earlier the trouble with Facebook, and it is, there is a fine line between counselors' First Amendment rights and representing the city without authority. And so, what you want to do is just run that litmus test, do I need to post this? Okay. If you feel that it's really important for a campaign, or it's really important for your personal convictions, you would identify yourself, I'm posting this personally, preferably don't even mention that you're a city counselor. I have to point out, you're in a small city, you never aren't wearing your little crown, or your mantle of city counselor or city mayor, but to the extent that you must post something, and you are clarifying it's in your individual capacity, okay. So, let's talk, even if you've jumped through both of those hoops, there still could be issues that you're creating for your city. So, think about it again before you post on Facebook. If you raise controversial issues... Oh, yes, Counselor Irvin?
Thank you. I mean, this has certainly been an issue for us in recent years. What are the implications? Is it...
You're muted.
You're muted.
If you could repeat that, we just, we couldn't, we missed the end of your question. Well, what I heard was he asked, what are the legal implications of posting on Facebook? You're clarifying it's in your individual capacity, what are the risks? So, there are practical risks, as well as some legal risks. The first legal risk to yourself would be that there might be a claim, I don't know what it might be, but a claim that you initiate against the city. And if you were speaking in a counselor capacity, and you weren't delegated that authority to speak on behalf of the city, CIS will say, we're not representing you. So, you would need to hire your own attorney and defend yourself against that claim, whether it's a claim of discrimination, you know, the example that was, came out of the city of Lebanon, is that a counselor wrote an editorial opinion in the local paper, mentioned she was on the council, but signed it in her individual capacity, and it triggered an unfair labor practice that the city had to defend against. But because the city had to defend against it, it was sort of unknown whether she was ultimately going to need to pay some of those fees, attorney fees that were incurred. So, that had city liability at issue, but also, it was not great for that individual counselor. Raising, the practical outcome can be raising controversial issues on Facebook, can swamp your staff, really, you as a body have asked them to work on other issues, and one counselor now is sort of diverting their time and energy to public records requests, you know, prepping responses for the council at whole, responding to public outrage, not spending time and city resources where you as a body want them to be. The one, there was a counselor was soliciting input regarding a public employee's upcoming evaluation, and the city employee claimed that that was evidence of discrimination. So, that one counselor was sued in that capacity. You can be accused of promoting your commercial or private interests and have an ex- complaint filed against you if it's, we're really in favor of, you know, some store coming to town, and that person may be a realtor, an employee, there could be some connections drawn, and you're using your counselor platform to promote this kind of development.
Counselor Stenning?
I mean, the question would, it seemed like it would hinge on whether or not you're using your platform, yes?
Right.
Because if I say, I tried this restaurant, it was fantastic, you should go there, I mean, how likely is it that I said that as a counselor on social media?
Oh, well, if you said it and you work there, I would say GEC, that's not a very big leap for GEC to jump and say, they're known to be a counselor in their community, and they're promoting their employer. But if you don't work there, and you're just saying it because you have a regular blog, and you like to talk about, as in your individual capacity, you know, maybe there's facts that you can support, that had nothing to do with your counselor platform, nor did it put money in your pocket. But I'm just using it, I'm using this as an example of all the things as a counselor you need to think about before you post publicly.
Just in a small town, it's really hard not to have those connections anyway.
It's very hard.
If I support a business, I probably support the owner, I probably know the owner, I mean...
Knowing the owner is different than working there, or having the owner be your relative. So, you know, those lines we talked about in the last training, about what constitutes a public perception, like improper public perception versus an actual ethics violation.
Yeah. It just seems like when in doubt, don't do it at all.
Well, that's, I mean, certainly that is my recommendation, but I just want to make people aware of why that's my recommendation, and if you're going to go down that road, what are the considerations to...
It makes a lot of sense, I just find it sad because so much misinformation floats around, and you're just like, I'm just going to squash this. I mean, none of us do it, I've noticed, because like, nope. Plus, you get bombarded by...
But you can bring it back here and talk about it here, can't you? So, that's, that is the tool that you do have, is who gets to sit up on something that is, you know, broadcast, and members of the public tune into, and there are minutes that memorialize your conversation. So, if you want to combat misinformation, do it from the dais.
Counselor Irvin?
Oh, write it down?
Yeah, hold it up.
Yep, write it down, hold it up. I'm going to continue, but we will come back.
You need a whiteboard, Counselor Irvin.
Do we have chat?
Oh, chat, yeah, okay.
Hostage situation.
LinkedIn.
Okay, guys, we're closing in on, we've got about 15 minutes till the real meeting starts. Do we want to jump into public records?
Did Greg get his question answered? Yeah, Greg's wondering about LinkedIn.
Counselor Irvin can chat now.
Okay.
He can send us a message through the chat.
Counselor Irvin was wondering about LinkedIn, and what the ramifications, probably same as Facebook.
Should you promote your business on LinkedIn?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
You're here on.
He's back.
You're begging her in.
Okay, the question, the question is, you were talking about promoting a business. My knowledge, LinkedIn is a social, I mean, it's like a business, social site, and so, if you're promoting your business, if I'm promoting my business on LinkedIn myself, is that a violation?
No. Nope, you get to advertise your own business. I wouldn't sit up on the dais and say, come to my business, that would be a problem, but everybody has a local, local business, and you're, not only that, you're expected to be involved in your community.
Wouldn't go on TV with your dog saying, I'm the city counselor, come buy a car for me. Right, don't do that.
Right. Okay, we're going to leap into public records.
Sorry, the reason why I ask is because in the bio, you know, in your resume, which is posted on there, like, stuff's on there.
Yes, in your bio, that it's on the city platform, the city website. I mean, we could ask GEC, but I just, everybody has a resume, and that's not promoting your business to members of the public, it's explaining who you are in the community. But I don't want to cut you off, now that we can hear you. Anything else? Okay.
Well, I think we're getting to that, the public record is the thing that I was interested in.
Okay, so, public records, let me just, President Abraham Lincoln, it goes as far back as that, let the people know the facts, and the country will be safe. So, I got to let you, I got to let you know that anything that qualifies as a public record is most likely releasable. That's just the, just the way it is, and that's a good thing, so that everybody can be up to speed on what your decisions are based on, and why you decided the way you did. So, a public record, broad definition, it's any writing that contains public business information that's prepared, owned, used, or retained by a public body, regardless of physical form or characteristics. So, physical form characteristics, that means voicemails, it's, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be in writing, it's an electronic recording of a communication. And a recent Court of Appeals case, I think last year when I was here, I was saying, well, you know, I always caution counselors about taking notes during meetings, because it could be embarrassing, it could be your grocery list, and last year I was saying, well, one district court judge disagrees with me, but he was reversed. And so, the Court of Appeals now says that the mayor's notes in her private council notebook, she was found to be a public body, and she needed to release those notes that were being taken during public meetings. It's in line with everything we've always advised, but now it's, you know, in a court case. We already talked, it includes electronic information in emails. There is no duty to create a public record, and so, to the extent that there's a request for lists that the city could create but doesn't have, you don't have that record, you don't have to create records in response to public records requests. Okay, moving on, so, it is not a confidentiality law, we already talked about that, you're disclosing unless it's exempt, unless a record is exempt under the law. There's many examples of information an entity might want to keep out of the public eye, but very few actual exemptions. And even when an exemption says this kind of information might be non-disclosable, you might be able to hold it back, there's actually a public interest balancing test that says, but if it's in the public's interest, you're still going to have to release it, even if the legislature agrees, yep, that's confidential, but, so, there's a lot of conditionally exempt pieces of information. So, we, your city actually has an e-communications policy in effect. What we, as your staff and your legal counsel, try to help you do is to make sure that those public records that you are creating, whether via email, text, or your notes, we just want to make sure that those are retained with Mindy, so that they come to the city, and in response to a public records request for all Counselor X's emails on this particular topic, Mindy confidently knows that she has all of those and can respond to the public records request without having to bog you down, make you go back through your emails, make you go way back into deleting emails, or have to retain an expert to go back into your metadata. So, if you aren't using the city's email account, if you create a public record, please just forward it to Mindy once it's created. So, for instance, one of the counselors used to communicate solely via text, and he would end up having to take screenshots of those texts and forward them to the prior city recorder, just to make sure that they were actually retained, because you can imagine how hard it is to find deleted texts on her cell phone.
I think Counselor Irvin, did you have a question?
Yeah. So, the question is to the chain of custody of who has to receive a public records request. Is there a statute that you can point us to that says, you know, if there is a public request, a public records request, this is who it needs to go to and be received from?
Yeah, so, the statute says that all public entities will identify a records custodian, and your records custodian by policy, by the city's public records policy, is the city recorder. And it's actually... And it's actually, Mindy, do you want to talk a little bit about that? So you are the city's records custodian, but some records requests go to the police department.
Specifically, police reports. That would be the ones that go through the police department.
Okay, and so any requests for police reports go to the police department, just to repeat that a little louder. But Mindy is your records custodian, so to the extent that anybody has questions, go to Mindy first and she can show you the policy, give you a request form, and then those can be submitted properly.
Is there anyone that has access to public records that doesn't have, does not have to make a public records request?
So as an individual counselor, I always say you don't have any authority beyond what a general citizen has unless the council has delegated you some authority to go and compile information and bring it back. And so I'm reading into your question and tying it back to individual counselors who don't have access to all public records. My experience is that staff is very responsive, so to the extent that a counselor needs additional information to better understand an issue, they're new to the council, they haven't had the background that existing counselors have had, staff will provide that to you, not in response to a public records request. But the flip side of that, that I've seen, are counselors who run staff ragged, saying, "I need to know this, I need to know that, I want to see all the accounting on X, Y, and Z accounts." And to protect staff from, again, spending time in city resources in response to one individual counselor who doesn't have delegated council authority, I always say, please submit those in public, on a public records request and they will be responded to in due course.
Same apply to all staff who is not a custodian.
I, you know, Richard, do you want to talk to that? I don't, that would be internal city policies and I am, I just deal with the public. Staff isn't, you know...
Yeah, and in order to do the work that we do, we have, we create public records and share those amongst staff regularly, I mean, in order to carry out our functions. So I can't, we don't, we don't request public records in that way. I mean, yeah, because it's, it's part of our administrative functions.
So, you know, though, let's tie it back to the counselor analysis, which is, so if a member of the staff has a need, a departmental need or a job duty need to access certain public records, that makes a lot of sense. But if one staff member is bothering Mindy daily and saying, "I need to see tons of different things from different departments that have nothing to do with their job function," that would need to go through a public records request and be treated in due course, just like all other public records requests. So, actually, the next slide talks about timelines. I kept talking about in due course, public records requests are dealt with. A couple legislative sessions ago, the public records law was amended to require the records custodian first to acknowledge a public records request within five days and then complete the public records request, which generally means produce those records 10 additional days after that. So there's 15 days in which to respond to most public records requests. And the reason that that's important for you all to know is that if Mindy receives a request for city councilor emails and you're on vacation, she's still under this timeline. And so it's really critical, first, to have provided those emails in advance so that you don't have public records that she doesn't have access to, and then second, to be very responsive, even if you're in TV. And then the next two slides just are a couple balancing test exemptions. So you can see the sort of wide-ranging types of protections for public records, but also even these have balancing considerations and could be released if in the public interest. That concludes public...
Six fifty-nine.
Whoa! But I'm available for questions and hopefully we didn't move too fast.
Any questions? All right. Very good. This meeting's adjourned. So we are, oh, I have seven o'clock.
Do, does, I guess anybody need a break?
Does anyone need a break?
Or ready to jet right in?
Take a five-minute break?
Let's come on, go and check out facilities.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Mostly just a walk around.
Yeah, move a little bit.
Yeah.
My watch goes, I'm going to move.
Oh, that's right.
No big plans, I know, I'm exhausted.
We were talking about letting everybody know, man, I'm tired.
No big plans for your anniversary? Could be that tomorrow?
No. I was saving up my time because I need to visit my dad. My stepmother has Alzheimer's, so I'm going to have to go down that route and so I'm going to coast, well, plus we've got the crazy nights, you know, in the warming center, so maybe next month. Or equally, I should say, we might go out there.
Yes.
We love, actually, for our husband. It's funny, we've been talking about it for days, but then, you know, I chatted with her this morning and that, which is broken, I'm here, I just look at my calendar for what I'm going to do. And it's like, oh, I forgot. So I called her.
That's funny. It seems like yesterday and also yesterday were ours. Being married on the 29th is kind of fun because usually you celebrate those big five-year milestones, you know, five is ten years.
Scarier than that. I was, I was eighteen when we started dating, so we've actually been dating and marrying for over forty years. Isn't scary. That's scary to me.
I remember when Sean was seventeen.
Yeah. Kids are all that. Little grandkids, yeah, they're tough. It goes by fast. Yeah, my youngest is twenty-nine. Twenty-nine. I forget that right. I have them three this year. In December. When I turned four, I put a picture of him as a little kid in the paper and said, "Guess which counselor just turned four." Well, I was the youngest. That was, that was a guessing, it was pretty clear. Funny, it's...
Is Counselor Irvin still on?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there he is. So I guess we're all here? Seven oh-five, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drea? Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Youth Representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Merida?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Solson?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, we are the pride of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic of British Sands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items to be added to the agenda? I see none. Appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizen comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of thirty minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on the agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. The council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. First person signed up to speak is Sean Goddard.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me clearly? I probably won't need the microphone, but I'll use it so I can keep my tone down a little bit. First of all, thank you for welcoming back into your community. I've been here for approximately four months, I've lived in Lane County for approximately twenty years. About ten years ago, I decided to relocate from Cottage Grove due to my civil rights being violated by Mike Fleck, my community sheriff. During that time, what I did is I moved and relocated to New Jersey. I spent six months in Michigan before I found a job at New Jersey Dr. Farmer. Became a role in the Lakeview College, became a student leader, led the BSC as president, chaired the diversity council. Led as a leader for Oregon students of color coalition, bringing incentive-based events to 7,000 plus African-American, Latino, and biracial students throughout the state of Oregon. I come to you today because of the work that I've done to repair myself as an individual. For eight years of living in Cottage Grove, I lived in the gateway apartments and received subsidies, lived on food stamps, indebted for the part-time work through parent partnership. It was very difficult. I had two minor children, three and four years old, who are now twenty and twenty-one. My daughter was born here in Cottage Grove, she's now sixteen, lives in New Jersey. The discrimination upon which I felt I made play in community sharing is documented. Faye Stewart was the county commissioner at the time. And due to my advocacy, I reached out to Washington DC, White Heat Agency, to talk about the discrepancies of community sheriffs reporting me as a single white woman with my children. Well, six months after that initial... Six months after that initial violation, Faye Stewart met me at the Pink House and asked me what did he want me to do about her. I said, "Well, at least if it's not fudging the people." So he said, "They won't be allowed on their premises after three p.m. or during non-business hours." Because that was my assumption, that the only way that I could be assumed as a white woman with four, with five children, was if somebody was actually mis, misleading information as if it came to a federal agency and not as a director with Mike Fleck. Sadly, it didn't stop there. Sadly, Mike Fleck sought a stalking order against me, further violating my civil rights. He also advised a coworker that was in a sexual relationship with me to file a restraining order against me. During the not proceeding, 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 the judiciary had to advise that worker of their rights because they were violating my civil rights. I was not aware of that at the time and had to do years of research to find out how my civil rights were violated here in Cottage Grove, so I'm back for those things to be answered to. Today I went to community sheriffs and Mike Fleck told me I was not allowed to be there and there was trespass. But he did say that he would not deny me services because that would be a violation of federal law. Here I have a letter documented January eighth, 2004, that states, "Mr. Goddard, effective immediately, you are also permitted, prohibited from receiving services, any services from community sheriffs." So this letter states that I'm not allowed to receive services, but today you said, "Though I'm not allowed to be on the premises, you wouldn't deny my services," because I think that you realized that that was a violation of my federal rights. So you didn't realize that in 2014, but you realize that today. Here is a letter from Senior and Disabled Services dated 7/7/2022. Dear Sean Goddard, this letter is to inform you that the safety of Senior and Disabled Services, S and B S, employees, clients, and visitors is important, is an important concern to our organization. Threats, threatening behaviors, or acts of violence against employees, clients, visitors, others, while S and D property, conducting business or receiving services from S and D will not be tolerated. May I continue?
Yes, do you have much more?
I have two, well, but how long may I leave two more minutes to finish at least the statement I have?
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
This letter was documented from the Senior and Disabled Services. Based on your recent behavior, you are prohibited from coming into the office located at 1015 Willamette Street. This letter is similar to one with, like, community sheriffs, except in the instance with Senior and Disabled Services, the director called me, apologized, told me that they were in complete violation of my rights, administered a new policy and procedure for dealing with people that they feel are not obeying the rules. And then reinstated me in full. Oddly though, Jose Alves, an officer, was outside, one of friends with me, and told me that if these things in this document were untrue, that is a form of harassment. The things in the community sheriffs document are untrue and it is a form of harassment, and I will be filing harassment charges against Mike Fleck. So I asked this counselor, as a public member, they see the actions of this individual and there are several other people in this community that have been trespassed by Mike Fleck because he does not like them. Not that they violate anything, but they're wrong. And that is my time. I will leave you with that. My hope that your ethics department may want to investigate these allegations a little bit further. I will definitely be taking legal action against the city of Cottage Grove as it relates to Mike Fleck as a council member immediately. I apologize.
Thank you. Bill Christensen?
This will be short and sweet. Bill Christensen, 1337 Elm Avenue, Cottage Grove. I saw on the agenda tonight a desire to raise garbage rates and I oppose raising garbage rates. It seems like a small thing, but we're heading into recession. I'm self-employed and I, instead of working five days a week lately, I've worked one day a week for the last month or so, very slow. So I would just encourage the powers that be to reconsider. Yes, there will be a time to raise garbage rates. Now is not the time. So I'm going to go on record and just say now is not the time. There's Cottage Grove, I checked comparable cities in population of Cottage Grove and the garbage rates in most of... and the garbage rates in most of them were under what they're charging currently. So anyway, I would just say, please don't raise garbage rates at this time. Thank you.
Amy Merriday? Oh, I'm sorry about that. Okay, that is everyone that's signed up. So that moves us to public hearings, which we have none. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. May the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Ervin?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Do we have a motion, just as a clarifying?
What's that? You have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm losing my mind here. Yes, aye.
Counselor Merriday?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenith?
Aye.
Mayor Solson?
Aye.
Approval of January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three city council meeting minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm losing my mind too much. Resolutions and ordinances. Second vote for ordinance number three, thirty-one seventy, annexing seventy-seven nine six seven South Sixth Street into the city of Cottage Grove. Staff report by city planner, Mr. Mockman.
Good evening. Thank you, mayor and council. The Public Works and Development Department brings before the council ordinance thirty, three one seven zero for a second vote and potential adoption. The first vote on this ordinance, three one seven zero, occurred on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, following a public hearing in which no public comments were received. It is recommended by staff that the council consider ordinance number three one seven zero for a second vote and adoption.
Counselor Fleck?
Madam Mayor, I move that the council adopt, I'm sorry, ordinance number three one seven zero.
Second. We have a motion with the second. The recorder please call the roll.
Counselor Merriday?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stenith?
Aye.
Counselor Ervin?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck? Mayor Solson?
Aye.
Resolution carries. Business from the city council. Item A, presentation of Lane County Public Health Report, Suicide in Lane County, two thousand to twenty twenty. Staff report for the city manager, Mr. Myers.
We have with us tonight Roger Brubaker from Lane County Public Health. He's the suicide prevention coordinator. And he's come to give a little presentation on the Suicide in Lane County, twenty-one, two thousand to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty report, and you have that in your packet. Quick report.
Good evening. Good to be here. I presented here at this city council report. Just want to thank you real quickly just for having me here. Again, my name is Roger Brubaker. I work as the suicide prevention coordinator for Lane County Public Health. I just want to, first off, just start with commending the city of Cottage Grove for having this conversation. The city of Cottage Grove has frequently requested information and for me to come down and speak with different representatives, with your Yak over the years, and amongst the many city governments in the county, you are unique in that way. So I just want to kind of commend you on that frankly. So I'm just gonna detail some of the information that we provided the community in this report of suicide mortality over the past twenty years. And then I'm gonna give a little bit of information on some recommendations, however, I'm gonna do that with a pretty light touch because that's gonna be a lot of, a lot of those, a lot of what comes from this needs to be the decisions and the products of the members of the Cottage Grove community. And so I'll talk about that in a moment when I get to the end here. But I'll kind of cover the data and the information just so we have that educational kind of component out of the way. So then we can think about, so then you all can think about, and with the help of Lane County Public Health, can think about what the city wants, how they want to respond to this issue. Yeah, before I jump into this, though, I do just want to mention that I'll be talking about suicide quite abstractly, quite coldly. And however, I want to recognize, though, that while I do that, this is a subject, quite obviously, that isn't really conducive to that. It's personal. People in this room, certainly know people who have died by suicide, know people who have survived attempts. I would, in a room of this size, I would acknowledge that it would be very common for people to have lost loved ones, to have serious thoughts of suicide themselves, and that this is a part of their lives. So I share this just to take a moment to acknowledge that before I just kind of dive into the data and start talking about this in that, in that cold. So the goals of my brief presentation today, we have until, sorry, I don't have a clock with me. We have about fifteen minutes, right? So I'm just gonna share some very select findings from this report. Thank you for including the entirety in your packet. It's quite lengthy. It's quite dense. I appreciate your time and patience that you, if you are able to take a look at it. This is data from all of the people who have died by suicide in Lane County, roughly one thousand five hundred over the course of twenty years. And specifically, over the past ten years, we did a specific analysis of different smaller regions in the area, smaller cities in Lane County, including Cottage Grove, in which fifty-eight people died by suicide between two thousand and ten and twenty twenty. And then, like I said, I'm just gonna provide a brief overview of some recommendations, and I'm happy to have some conversation.
This is inclusive of the year twenty twenty, or is it up to twenty?
Inclusive of the year twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, and that's a good, just to mention this, data is delayed on things like this. You can imagine for many reasons, toxicology findings, law enforcement investigations, things like that. And so the most updated information we have is twenty twenty. We don't have information past that currently that is validated. So real quick, if you're looking at this graph here up on the board, up on the screens, what you'll be seeing is the suicide rate in Lane County at the blue line, Oregon as the state at the red line, and the national average on the green line there. Immediately, what you notice is that the rate of suicide in Lane County has been historically greater than the state and national average. We're about, over the course of twenty years, the rate of suicide in the county as a whole has increased by about eighty percent. And in twenty twenty, we were twenty percent greater than the state average and about sixty-five percent greater than the national average in terms of our suicide rate. So suicide prevention is particularly important in a region such as ours. Like I mentioned, we did a couple of, we were able to look at a number of different cities and regions in the county, and we identified three cities and regions in Lane County that had higher suicide rates than the county average, knowing that it already is elevated. What we found out is that the cities of Florence, Junction City, and Cottage Grove all had rates of suicide that were roughly about twice, if not more, than the county average. So that previous graph that you saw demonstrating an increased rate already is double in communities, in certain communities. What I will mention also is that, while, if you have the opportunity to look into the report and look at some of it, I'll share some demographics here in a moment around that, some of the information that we know. The main thing I want to emphasize around that is that ninety percent of these people that died by suicide are twenty-five years of age and older. And that holds generally true for Cottage Grove as well, frequently in suicide prevention, and for good reason. A lot of attention is focused on youth and young adults. And that's really important because we need to, if we're thinking about prevention, we need to get in front of populations at important developmental stages and to make sure that we are setting up healthy cultures, lifestyles, environments for them for the rest of their lives. So a lot of focus goes there. But I do really want to emphasize that the vast majority of people that are dying by suicide are middle-aged and older adults, specifically men. And so there's a lot of different kind of cultural aspects of that and aspects of the life course that I think are important to consider when you're thinking about who you're trying to reach in your specific community. Next slide. So one of the things that I try to do just to help visualize what this looks like for folks in terms of who's dying by suicide is that roughly in Lane County, what we know is about one hundred people die by suicide each year, on average, over the past five years or so. Twenty-five, one out of every four of those deaths, and again, this would, we don't have very small data, like for Cottage Grove specifically, but I would say that this, it's safe to assume that this generally, again, applies to your city, is that one out of four deaths by suicide is either a veteran or a current military service member. So that's immediately a priority population for the prevention of suicide. Next. And again, if we think about this again as about a hundred people dying per year, about fifty percent of people who die by suicide in any given year have some sort of diagnosable mental health problem or mental illness. I'll really emphasize something radically important here, though. That is the exact same lifetime prevalence of mental illness in the general population, meaning the people who die by suicide are not, generally speaking, more mentally ill than people who do not die by suicide. This is a really important fact, a really important fact, because so much of how we talk about suicide distances ourselves from it, looks at it as some sort of pathology or illness. And really, what I try to communicate to folks is that, yes, mental illness plays a role in suicide, but mental illness is simply, in this case, a source of pain. It's a source of disconnection and a thing that gets in the way of how people relate to one another. But it doesn't cause suicide, and it's actually not more common in people who die by suicide compared to the general population. I say this just because many of my recommendations will be focused around public health initiatives, not really behavioral health in any specific way. Next slide. Something also that really important to emphasize is that, one of the primary reasons why we have such a high rate of suicide in the United States compared to other countries in the world is the prevalence of firearm ownership. What we know in Oregon is roughly about one out of every two households has a firearm in it. We can roughly assume that in our more rural areas, it's probably even higher. We don't have data on that, but we know that, generally speaking, rural firearm ownership is higher than urban usually. And what we, what we see is that around fifty-five percent of people who die by suicide die from the use of a firearm. So the environments we live in and the environments in our communities really influence suicide rates as well. And our appropriate target for prevention, it goes beyond just some of the social, some of the more social concerns that I'll talk about as well in terms of how we relate to one another, how we include one another in our communities, and how we help people in crisis. We also want to be thinking far upstream about the environments that we live in, and if there's things in them that are lethal, especially firearms, because they have the lowest, as you can imagine, they're highly lethal compared to other means of death by suicide and have very, very low survivability rates. Next slide. The next thing I would really want to mention is that when we think about people who die by suicide, roughly about third, about one-third of them have some sort of substance use problem. What I mean by that is some sort of problem that has been a part of their life for some time, or perhaps they were intoxicated at the time of their death. And the number one substance that influences all of this is not some sort of exotic street drug or anything like that. It's just alcohol, the most common legal, easily accessible drug, drug that there is in the United States. And so when this drug, alcohol, influences communities, it quite frequently shows up in our suicide numbers. Next slide. Couple other things I just would want to highlight when thinking about who dies by suicide and some of the social, this is where we get into culture, where the social forces, well, we've been in culture already, but even more so here, the social forces that influence suicide. We can't distance ourselves from culture at all around this. We have to engage with it quite directly. And that means engaging with the ways that we think about and promote concepts of gender identity within our communities. I'll say this specifically around men. And if you notice the title of this, I titled it here, disparities and inequities. I want to define those terms really quickly. Disparities are simply differences between two different populations. If I was, if I were to compare men and women around suicide, like I mentioned earlier, and notice a difference in the rates of suicide, I would say that's a disparity, that men have higher rates of suicide than women. However, if I were to compare two populations and notice a difference in which there's a power imbalance to, that's when I would call it an inequity, meaning that there is inequality that is also influencing that outcome as well, right? And that's not, we can't say that for all populations if they're, if they have greater levels of power, social power. So traditionally speaking, I think we could say that patriarchal attitudes influence our society in a lot of different ways, right? That men hold a place of privilege, and in suicide, this comes out in ways, in unexpected ways. Many people would assume that people, generally speaking, populations with greater levels of social power would be less vulnerable to suicide. However, that's not the case with men. Men are four times more likely to die by suicide than women in the general population. So basically, what I'm trying to say here is that frequently, what we'll talk about in, say, social justice work, is that oppression hurts both the oppressor and the oppressed. Suicide is a really unfortunate example of that when we look at the outcomes of suicide, particularly in men. And we need to engage directly, like I said, with culture, specifically around gender when we talk about this. Couple other things I want to highlight here, then, in terms of inequities, are unhoused populations. What we know is roughly about one out of every twenty people who die by suicide in our county were either experiencing housing instability or homelessness at the time of their death. We know that indigenous populations have the highest rate of suicide in the U.S. We can't look at that data here in Lane County just because our population is so white that just statistically, we can't report any of those numbers without it being identifiable. But we do know this from the general national data. And it's really important also just to emphasize that indigenous populations are the only population that have rates of suicide that are the highest among youth and actually taper, taper off significantly as people age, in complete distinction from any other racial or ethnic population in the U.S. Last, I just want to highlight that, again, we need to directly engage with gender, and I would also then argue sexual identity, is that we know that LGBTQ plus youth and adults also experience extremely high rates of suicidal thoughts, attempts, and unfortunately, also deaths as our data is getting a little bit more precise around many of these aspects of identity. Okay, next slide. So like I said, I just have a couple of select recommendations that I feel are relevant to the city of Cottage Grove. These are very general, high-level kind of statements because I'm not, I'm not familiar with all of your, with all just kind of the workings of city council and maybe some of the most recent conversations that you've been having, so I wanted to be kind of fair to that. But then also, like I said, I also want to emphasize that when I talk about suicide prevention, it's about community engagement. And it's not my position from the county public health to comment on what a city should or should not do to support that decision-making, but, so that's why these are kind of generalized. So number one, Cottage Grove has a, has a, has a long tradition of engaging with public health with our offices for many, many decades. And that's been, like I said, it's commendable and noted frequently in our offices. So I just, my first recommendation here is to continue to support the health and the social determinants of health for all people in Cottage Grove. What I mean by the social determinants of health are just the things that we need in our lives so that we can stay healthy that go beyond medical and healthcare or anything like that, housing, food, safety, security. To continue to prioritize policy work associated with the development of accessible and safe housing for all people in Cottage Grove. I know, I do know that that's been big conversation down here. I'm not familiar with all the ins and outs of it, but it does influence with how you all have been discussing it. But I do know that, obviously, like But I do know that, obviously, like I said, it does influence our suicide rates when people have safe, affordable, accessible housing. And then also lastly here, to continue to promote a culture of equity, inclusion, and safety for all people in Cottage Grove. I have just some little hyperlinks on the bottom there if you're curious to learn more about some of the information and reports that Lane County Public Health has produced in the past that can be, act as guidance in addition to this report. You may be familiar with some of these documents already. Next slide. Yep, so that's just my information again right there. So I work with our prevention team in public health. We work on a variety of different subjects that many of you I know or may be familiar with already. In substance use prevention, we work with our community, with our CCOs, in supporting a variety of upstream prevention efforts. We have our suicide prevention team, obviously. We work around other tobacco prevention, a variety of other subjects like that as well. So if folks are interested in learning more about that, I'm happy to share that information as well. And I just want to thank you all for your time. I appreciate being invited down here to discuss this and share this information. And time allows, I'm happy to take some questions.
Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Grabaker, for coming and presenting. Can you add some clarity to the populations that Lane County Public Health recognizes as the oppressor versus the oppressed, as you made in your statement earlier?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's safe to say, right, that we live in a, that we live in the United States as a patriarchal society, right, that men hold a place of privilege. I mean, the clear evidence that is at least that we can point to is political office, right? So if we look at the, if we look at the demographics of our national Congress, it's predominantly men, right? So just in a very concrete, flat way, men hold more power than women, right? And so that's just one good example of that. We could look at the tradition of who's been in the most high offices of political power, and we could point to men in presidential positions. So just in terms of political power, it's pretty straightforward. I'm not sure about all the demographics around business, but I think we can safely assume that that's the case as well, that men tend to hold more power than women do. So what I mean by that then is that that power is a matter of, not always earned, right? It's a matter of also just tradition, culture. And sometimes tradition and culture are valuable, beneficial. Sometimes they're harmful. I'll let everyone else kind of judge about what that means in the history of the United States, but it's a pretty bare fact, like I said, that there's a disproportionate balance of power between genders in the United States. I think Cottage Grove obviously is demonstrating a little different here with our mayor, but generally speaking, it's not the case. So that's all I mean. And so like when I, when I'd say about the concept of oppression is that when there is a disproportionate balance of power, oppression occurs. It's just a pretty straightforward outcome of that. It's not a matter of maliciousness. It's not a matter necessarily always of intent, but it occurs. And people are barred from certain opportunities that others have, that by those, the absence of privilege. So when I say that around, particularly around men, and we could even expand this to white men, is that there's a, there's a lot of like norms around what it means to hold on to that power, around what a man is supposed to be, around, and that, they need to be tough, they need to be a certain type of person, they need to man up, right? And that leaves men in a very precarious position if they are not that type of man, if they don't hold those gender norms to be their own, but they feel the pressure of them being enforced on them, right? And so a lot of this can, what we know from the research, and I'd be happy to share some, if you read the report actually, and check out the section on gender specifically, there's some important research that demonstrates that many of the cultural attitudes, the acceptability of violence, the stigmatization of surviving a suicide attempt, all influence how many men die by suicide. And many of these things can be traced back to cultural norms around gender. So this is, it's a very expansive conversation, and it's not, and it's highly nuanced and one that I wouldn't want to leave anybody with the sense of that it's shaming men or anything like that. It's just that masculinity is rough on everybody, or normative masculinity is rough on everybody, women, men included. And there's more gentler ways that we can be men with ourselves, with other men, with women in our lives, with whatever gender identity that people hold, so that so much of the strife around gender is not so influential, particularly around suicide rates.
Counselor Stenath.
Yes, thank you for being here. You had mentioned that there were three communities in the county, including Cottage Grove, that showcased markedly higher suicide rates. Were all smaller communities studied and we showed, our rates were higher than all of them, or?
No, that's a good question.
Were we kind of studied because we're emblematic somehow, or?
Right, no, good question. So a lot of this just has to do with the population during our study period. We, for, really essentially for statistical purposes, we didn't feel comfortable looking, I mean, comfortable isn't more about emotions, I guess, so really just that, let's just keep it about the math. We didn't feel confident that we could publish findings on smaller communities that had less than 5,000 people in them during the study period. So between 2010 and 2020, Cottage Grove had a population above 5,000 for the duration of that period, as did Florence, as did Junction City. We looked at other communities, Crestwell, Upriver, it's kind of hard to, you know, there's not as much of a singular population center there. We were, Benita and the Fern Ridge area, for example, had a population less than 5,000. So we weren't able to remark on certain communities, but we were on those that had populations greater than 5,000.
So our size made us big enough to be analyzed?
Yeah, exactly.
The second part of that would be, you basically listed support for things that we're already doing, you know, ongoing support for things we're already doing. But what more could we do? I mean, I'd rather live in a town that did its utmost to do something about a rate like this than a town where a lot of people choose to end their life. What's the most we can do?
Yeah, so I think, so, I don't know, I just always recommend this book, if everyone's ever seen it, an author, Robert Putnam, oh gosh, about 20 years ago now, wrote a book called Bowling the Love, where he talks about the, kind of the erosion of civic, of civic culture and civic engagement. Now, there's essentially kind of pointing to things like Lions Clubs, Kiwanis Clubs, and other opportunities where people just get together, right, where they just relate to one another, and how that has influenced the social fabric, how that has influenced how people relate together, how frequently they relate together, the quality of those relationships. So when I think, like I said, when I think about suicide prevention, people, people die by suicide because they, they don't have strong relationships frequently, or they don't feel that they have strong relationships, they feel that their lives are a problem for other people, that they're a burden on other people, and they live in environments where there's something that can kill them, a firearm, most likely, right, that they could use to kill themselves. So working on firearm, I mean, we live in a preemption state, so any, at the county or city level, working on any kind of firearm restriction, what I would call lethal means restrictions, or just more tempered home safety, would be a better way to say that, is making sure that at the very least, that if there are opportunities to provide recommendations, potentially maybe from city government on safe storage of firearms, Lane County Public Health, we distribute firearms lock boxes, rifle lock boxes, ammunition lock boxes, medication and handgun lock boxes, and we'd be happy to talk with your city government about how you could be a distribution point for that in the future. So that's one way. But then to get back to these kind of like more cultural issues, if there are, I think just, sometimes I want to celebrate and reframe many of the things that a community already does to prevent suicide, when they find ways to bring people together and to create greater social harmony. And so sometimes, that's why some of those, that's why there's that continue, continue, continue thing, but with greater intention, if there are specific issues around this that Cottage Grove, that the citizens in Cottage Grove, or people that live in Cottage Grove, or the government wants to pick up, I hopefully that some of those provide a little bit of a roadmap of when we do have an event, how inclusive is it? Is everyone actually invited and feel welcome here? Is this actually accessible for all people? When we talk about community involvement, integration, and togetherness, do we really reach everybody? Did everybody know that this event or that this opportunity was happening? So anything we can do to make sure that, that social relationships and cohesion are really kind of robust in that way. And again, and if you want to engage in these, in these topics directly, I encourage people to, but you know, I mean, they're politic, I don't shy away from this, they're politically dicey. I don't stand up here talking about gender in these, in these ways, not recognizing that this is a politically fraught conversation as well. So there's, and that's a matter of like how deeply a community feels comfortable in engaging in this and how capable they are as well. These are a lot of hard things to hold, hold at once, and I, and I recognize that. That's not, it's not simple just to say, hey, let's, let's work on masculinity, hey, let's, let's work on firearm ownership and home safety, right? But I think some of those opportunities are available. So again, I'm keeping it kind of general, but knowing that public health is here to be your partner for the future when, because we can't solve everything tonight, you know.
Counselor Flack.
Thank you. I guess a couple of things, I apologize, I only got about a third of the way through your report this weekend, I've been unfortunately too busy, but I don't remember reading if sad, you know, seasonal affective disorder might also be part of the reason, and is it all in northern states have higher numbers? Because I know that can be a real thing for people, and there are some special lights, you know, that folks can get around that. Was that part of your study?
Yeah. Well, no, so not so sad seasonal affective disorder or any kind of seasonal depression. We don't have insight on that in the data systems that we have access to. We can, we can see mental illness and depression, it through the data systems that we have, but not seasonal affective disorder. What I can say though, is that the Pacific Northwest and the Northwest generally has the highest suicide rates compared to the rest of the country. These regions are frequently more demographically white than the rest of the country as a whole, and white people die by suicide far more frequently than other race ethnicities. Also latitude, we know this throughout the globe, latitude at both poles has something to do with suicide. We don't understand why, but it tends to, we tend to have higher rates of suicide at our latitudes. And yes, days of sunlight, right? We, of course, that influences, we see some of our highest rates of suicide in Alaska, for example. Latitude is an influence on that. So yes, and yeah, and there are, there are lights that people get when they experience seasonal affective disorder that simulate sunshine, and a lot of people get a lot of benefit from them. My grandmother loved them, loved hers, and it really helped her get through some dark times. So, yeah, absolutely.
So the other thing, like you said, I think we've all been touched in some fashion. You know, depression is such a, I have not, I mean, I've had times when I've been depressed, but, but having depression is very different if you've been around it. I mean, Robin Williams comes to mind, you know, somebody who fought, you know, that depression for years and years, and then, you know, ended up, ending his life. And we locally have had, you know, I've had youth that I've been involved with, and you just want to say, gosh, yes, it seems bad when you're young, but wait till you're older, and how really bad it's going to get, I'm just joking. But, but, but no, I mean, you realize that you have the tools and the skills to cope. And that's where I'd like to go is with therapy. You know, there used to be a stigma, you're talking about stigmas, you can't go to a therapist because people think I'm crazy. Well, you know, we all have issues, and talking, whether it's with a therapist or your pastor or, you know, with somebody, I would really encourage, is it 988, the new number now? You know, if you or somebody else is depressed or having these thoughts, reach out, you know? It's always better to say something and stumble than try to work with folks. So I really commend you for your work and, and, you know, I'm hopeful we can make a difference.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for noting those resources, those are all great.
Counselor Mary Day.
I did spend a lot of time with the full packet, and what really hit me was our military service members, because I didn't find an exact number, but it's something like between seven and 10% of the population has served in military.
Oh, yeah, good question. I don't, oh darn, I usually know those stats off the top of my head, I do not know that one. Yeah, the only one I can quote here is one out of four deaths is a veteran in Lane County.
But if you reflect on how many members of the population have actually served, it's much lower than the rate of suicide. Number, if one in four served and one in four committed suicide, that would be...
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, let me clarify, yeah. One out of every four deaths by suicide in Lane County is a veteran. We, we have a, we don't have a, there's, there's more precise ways to dig into the stats on this, to compare rates and things, or per capita trends. What I, what I can say though is that because of the Roseburg VA and because of our own, in Eugene, our own local veterans hospital, is that there, there is a number of service-connected veterans. And then there also just is a much larger veterans population in Lane County than many other regions in the U.S. One of the things just to note for veterans, as to highlight one more resource, is that recently the VA had a policy change called the Compact Act, meaning that any veteran, whether they are service-connected or not, any veteran is able to, who is experiencing a suicidal crisis, is able to seek free healthcare for that suicidal crisis through the Compact Act at the VA or at any private provider as well. And they have to, all they have to do is demonstrate their military service. They don't have to be, have any other kind of qualification other than that. So there is, there has been some changes very, very recently with veterans.
And are you finding that most military personnel know that that's available to them?
No, unfortunately. It was, it was, not to criticize the VA, however, yeah, the communications and rollout of this and the publication of all of this information has been a little spotty, and not, nearly not people know. So one more opportunity to say it out loud.
Exactly. Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzhenitsyn. Thank you so much for taking the time out and walking us through this heartbreaking information. I can't help but think of some classes that I just recently took at a conference talking about mindfulness and the art of being mindful and being aware of what your own body feels like when you're sad and frustrated, angry, or hurt, and just taking a few seconds and really identifying within yourself, what does that really truly feel like? What am I putting out there? And recognizing that in other people too, gosh, they must be really having a really hard time, allowing that grace and getting off our phones, de-screening and having real conversations. As I tell my kids, I R L, in real life, we're going to talk in person, and we're not going to text with each other, we're not going to do that, we're going to talk in person, although that might be easier and convenient. I think as a society, we've really lost the ability to communicate like we did 30 years ago. So being aware of that. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, and if I can comment just very briefly, is the one, so online communication offers opportunities, of course it does, it connects people that could never be connected before, and it has a lot of, and it also pulls people apart, quite obviously, right? So it is, like many other tools, depends on how it's used, right? One thing I will comment on though, is that there is a significant and straightforward body of research demonstrating the specific harm of social media on girls, specifically around body image, and the rates of anxiety, depression, and suicide related to that. So that is, there is one very specific... So, that is, there is one very specific example that I would point to, saying that there is harm being caused, expectations that are being set that are completely unrealistic, and it's, and it's influencing the mental state and health of entire, of entire populations of young girls at critically important developmental stages. And it's, it's tragic. And so, yeah, any, anything that we can do to set norms that are achievable, that's really hard to do online, but we can do it in real life, right? Because we can see one another. So, anything we can do around community that brings people together in person is suicide prevention in my mind.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rubik, for spending your Monday evening with us, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having me, and I just wanted to, just last thing before I sit back down, is, again, just to return back to the, how I started here, is talking about this abstractly, coldly, is important. It's my job, to a certain degree. And reminding people that when they have these conversations, that it might bring up some strong emotional responses, it might even bring up some memories. And so, if that's the case for anybody in this room, or, or watching online, is that just take a moment tonight, really take a moment, to just be with yourself for a moment, be with somebody else, to just consider the impact of this conversation, or even just this topic on you, and how it's making you feel, and maybe even what you want to do about it, how you want to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item B, a request for direction from the City Council regarding the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan and Lowering Barriers to Residential Development. Staff report by Mr. Mangan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On Friday morning, the Council held a work session to discuss the recently completed Affordable Housing Implementation Plan. At the meeting, staff presented the final reports, recommended findings, or action items, to increase the development of new regulated affordable housing. And housing in general in the city of Cottage Grove, it's now appropriate for the City Council to provide direction to staff on the implementation of the action items contained in the report in Items Discussion and Work Session, excuse me, so that staff can begin to prepare proposed code amendments for later review by the Planetration City Council. For example, the City Council this evening can direct staff to return at the next meeting with a draft resolution to adopt the complete report, and all of its recommendations, or the Council can direct staff to begin working on the implementation of specific prioritized action items they believe will have the most effect in increasing regulated affordable housing development. It's my understanding that at least one member of the audience would like to speak on this, so I don't know, just want to call back up as we get into the, the direction portion of things, but. Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
So, Amy Mary Day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I understand that the state is 140,000 homes short, and that's why we have a lot of unhoused people. I'd just like to harp again on my rant about caregiving, and how we need to become a community of caregivers. Caring is a growth industry. And so, in our town, we have a shortage of caregivers. We have a shortage of people who work in our preschools, teach in our schools, work in our assisted living, nursing homes, med techs and aides, CNAs, teachers aides, supermarket workers, people who put, pull the tap to put the head on your IPA, and steaming milk for your latte also need places to live in Cottage Grove. Mr. Mangan has said recently in public meetings that the south side of town is going to accommodate 1,000 homes in the urban growth limit. And so, what I'm asking you tonight is to provide direction to him to help us move in the direction of actually planning. Planning is the answer. This is the role of government to anticipate the needs of our people, and it's common sense. And so, in our town, if you have a high school kid that graduates, there's nowhere, no way that they can rent a place to live. If your kid has come home from college and wants to live back in Cottage Grove for a little while, there's no place to live. I think we all know this. The homes that are, I think Mr. Mangan mentioned, that are currently talking about building 1,000 homes, were listed as being 3,000 square foot to 9,000 square foot homes. And what I want to propose to you is that we just change that by an order of magnitude, and make them 300 to 900 square foot homes, or maybe 400 to 1,200 square foot homes. But the idea that we need 9,000 square foot homes is a little silly. Now, with nine, with 1,000 homes, you know, you could have two 9,000 square foot homes. Now, who would come live in them when our school students score at the 30th percentile nationally? I don't know. But the answer is planning. And so, what I would propose is that what we really need are residential care facilities. We have a mental health crisis, we have an unhoused population that has nowhere to go, even if they were to go through some programs that we could invent. And so, what I'm proposing is that, yes, we become a huge socialist town, where, oh no, not a socialist town. Socialism is when you expect the roads to be free, when you want the roads not to have potholes, we call that socialism. When we talk about building residential care facilities, we're talking about being able to solve the social problems we have. We need places for people to live that are reasonably sized, and we can do it. And so, my, what I'm asking you is to direct Mr. Mangan to become the most famous planner in the state of Oregon, and take on this, this task. I read today that 3 million Americans were displaced last year due to climate change-related weather problems. More are coming. Before long, there will be federal money to house people who are fleeing the coasts, or areas that are no longer habitable. What I would suggest is that we get our ducks in order so that we're ready to capitalize on that money, any green money. And yes, I actually believe that we should float a bond, maybe a 40-year bond, to build homes that can actually be used by people that we want to have live in our town, the caregivers of the future, who will make this the most livable and desirable place in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you. Concerns of Council.
Oh, I think we're still in this.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, thanks. So, I guess, I'm not sure, you know, I kind of brought this up in our work session, you know, the low-hanging fruit, I think, is the MPT for sure. I mean, I think I've heard nothing but support from the folks up here, so, I mean, I think that one's a pretty easy one. You know, allow nonprofits to provide, you know, rental units, you know, tax-free. I mean, their regular building is tax-free, it's not that big a loot, a step to, you know, do that. So, I, that would be my number one low-hanging fruit thing that I think we can do. You know, we've kind of talked about this on the committee, so we've talked about allowing multifamily development in the commercial areas. I think we decided in C2P, which is the Commercial Zones kind of T, you know, main in 99, that if they're not really street-facing, you know, we certainly could support that, or if they were second-story. I mean, I don't have any heartburn about those sorts of changes, I think those make sense. But I wouldn't want to get rid of commercial, because of course, then we're in a deficit there. And just as a quick clarification, south is actually where commercial is going to go, east is where housing's typically going, if you look at growth and, and the lands that are available. So, that's, and I just want to mention really quickly, boy, annexing in properties and expanding your urban growth bound is anything but easy and common sense. This is the government, and nothing is easier or makes sense. I'm sorry, I just have to say that, I know that sounds silly, but the rules around those things are just insurmountable sometimes. Let's see, so what else are we looking for? Provide more flexible options for meeting onsite, open space. I actually really love some of the ideas about, you know, allowing credits for parks that are within a, I would say, pretty close distance. I'm not sure the half-mile, since the city's two miles across, makes sense. But, you know, if it's in relatively close proximity, or maybe credits for big gyms and things that could be considered, I think those are, are ideas that are outside the box that I really like. The infill height, I'm actually one that I'm going to be a little, a bit of a stickler on. I think that if you're in a single-family home, and somebody wants to build a big three-story, you know, apartment complex next to you, there needs to be that setback that we have in our current code. So, I, I would not be very supportive of changing that. Height bonus, I think we talked about that, the 12 feet makes sense to me, and I don't have a problem, as long as those setbacks are established. And I'm sorry, I'm just kind of going through the laundry list, if you don't mind. Prioritize infrastructure, yes, but I guess I'd need more, what does that mean, and how are we going to afford it? Acquisition and rehabilitation of land, I think we talked about that, you know, especially like these nuisance properties, that makes so much sense, we're going to save ourselves time, you know, from police and, and community development, time, you know, to acquire those properties, and then, you know, turn them over for some low income, and actually, that's a landing acquisition. So, I think that's kind of it. Oh, the last piece I want to talk about is the MPT, and I would like to look at some options, maybe not the Eugene style, but I would love to look at either more of a public benefit piece, or going to an affordable piece, but something that makes sense and isn't so complicated as the Eugene model. So, my reluctance in the beginning with the MPT, which is the multi-unit property tax exemption, was the complexity for a small city to be able to manage a program of that complexity. But if there are ways we can do that, that, that our city can manage, and still build in an affordable piece, I'd certainly be supportive. And that's kind of my highlights. Thank you, Mrs. Mary.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you, Mayor Solzbi. I'm going to echo what you said, Counsel Flack, I think you did a really good job of kind of reading everybody in the room. The only comment that I would add is kind of an add-on that we talked about right at the very end, and just looking at short-term rentals. I know that that may not have been popular here on the dais, but I, I would like to clarify, I do not believe that we have a problem now. I don't think that we need to change where we're at now. So, registry was mentioned, and I think that's fine. I just don't want there to be a problem. I don't want to have to come back and address that when it is an issue, because we have such a shortage in houses already. So, I don't think we need to change anything, I'm just a little weary about growing that, if that makes sense.
Counselor Stenett.
Thank you. I was kind of curious how we would ultimately codify sort of the credits involved with having a park nearby. I fully support that, I think a lot of, a lot of, you know, open space that could come from a small development would be kind of useless, and, you know, sort of hacked up. Is there a way to, in codifying that, you know, the kind of those credits, to maybe encourage contribution of some kind to that park, or, you know, we're going to be good neighbors, and we're going to come in here and contribute to that? Did we talk about the public use aspect of our MPT requirements, or?
I raised it, I didn't really give any specifics, but addressing it, you bet.
Yeah, it'd be really nice to see a little more of, you know, a little more stringency there. I think there's some things we need, pretty bad, you know, some covered open space would be wonderful, if somebody wanted to take that on somehow. You know, we kind of, reducing that with the Harrison School, we would have, anyway. I think your synthesis is pretty good, otherwise.
Mayor, I mean, you asked a question about the credits process, just to go back to Friday morning, our current citywide Parks Master Plan was adopted in 2003, so I think that would be the first kind of iteration of, any kind of project like that would be to look at our whole system, identify capital improvements. I think out of that, what we could get towards would be either, and of course, the guides of council, and adherence to state law, but, you know, could, a program like that, you know, right now, if I remember correctly, at least this was a couple of years ago, a single-family building paid $1,250, and parks have C2s. Multi-family pays 267, so potentially, a system, if you were a program, could say, okay, in exchange for having an open space onsite, maybe purchase an additional SDC, or put it more into the SDC kitty, based on some formula that is agreed with the council. As an example, other things would be potentially, really need a new slide at the park, and it's, has to be municipal grade, whatever that is, and they could purchase that, would be something else. But again, it goes back to what is our, what is our capital improvement in parks, first place to know what we actually need?
That's a, it's a pretty old plan, is that, I mean, there's a huge park that didn't even exist. Is, is that up for, for a look at any time, the Parks Plan?
Counsel, whenever. The Council directs staff, we will look at ways that we can address that, but imagine that would be an 18 to 24-month process.
What is the typical, is there a typical, it's time to look again, kind of duration?
Your, your infrastructure stuff, water, wastewater, they're sort of mandated to do about 20 years, and streets are 20 years as well, I believe. Parks probably go a little longer, just because they don't have revenue coming in, they're parks, but, yeah.
They could.
20 years has passed, and so, or is just about to pass, it is time to look at it, and there have been changes.
Big ones. Thank you.
Counselor Irvin.
Thank you, I'm not sure if this is going to pick up or not, but, can you hear me? So, it sounds like we're just giving recommend, what kind of direction, recommendations to staff. And so, I am interested in, in exploring the options for the direction of the MPT, where it would include additional public benefit, including looking at an affordability aspect. I'm generally hesitant right now in, in making a whole bunch of moves that would contribute to more infill. I'd like to, I'd like to explore the opening of additional land in and around the Cottage Grove area, and understanding the challenges that lead up to that, and the timeframes, in addition to, you know, potentially more recruitment efforts of developers with our existing MPT, and, and what we have available currently. I am concerned about the livability within the existing, you know, city limits, and its infrastructure, and additional use, and additional incentives that, I guess, draw from the, the system, the ways that we fund the, the infrastructure currently. If we, if we dip into that, I think we do that in our hazard. And so, you know, mechanisms that don't, that don't draw additional resource on, on cities, and city staff, but continue to incentivize the, the build-out of what's, and, and resources to open up additional lands, not the, necessarily beyond the infill type that we have currently, is my recommendation.
Thank you. Any other, Counsel Flack?
Yeah, and, and I really appreciate your comments, Counsel Irvin. The downside is the state process, you know, that's why we did our housing needs analysis. We have to basically do a land inventory, we have to look at, you know, how much land's available, and it's very prescriptive. The state really dictates exactly how mu, how you go through the process, and I don't remember, it was 30, I want to say 3% or 9% is what they call constrained, but they're still considering available land. So, let's say there's a half-acre lot, that has a house dead middle on it, the odds of that actually being redeveloped are nil, yet it takes it out of our... So let's say there's a half-acre lot that has a house dead middle on it. The odds of that actually being redeveloped are nil. Yet it takes it out of our, you know, pool of what they're calling available housing. So I'm frustrated by that process, but I know that we've been keeping track of our inventory since that last study. And I would not want to spend more money on another study knowing that we're not gonna get there because we don't have a deficit, which would trigger us expanding our UGVs. So I guess I'm with you, except I would hate to spend money just to find out that we don't, we're not gonna be able to expand it. So I, like I said, I totally get it when we get there. I'm very supportive, but I think we're not there by a long shot. And maybe Mr. Monken can comment.
Mayor, Counsel Flick. Yeah, so I heard Venture and Mary Day brought up the property between Cleveland and South Ford Street, which is already annexed in the city in Zone R2, which is that median density or multifamily residential. And so there's a large, very large, I believe it's 67 total acres of land that's refilled with all of them. I mean, it's, you know, there's obviously several steps that have to occur for that land to be developed, such as, you know, master plan appointments, engineer documents, infrastructure builds, things like that. But yeah, now we're sitting on quite a substantial amount of residential land right now. Locally, I can see it by looking at the map. And of course, as Counsel Flick mentions, the state sees it on the map as well. And so that certainly kind of binds us into our current footprint. Opportunities for adjustment may be worth discussing with the state if and when the proposed flood maps come into, up for adoption. It's not necessarily considered to be an expansion. It's really just moving up from one place to another. So those are certainly paths. But in saying that, I would offer that DLCD is gonna wanna see probably a revised economic opportunities analysis, which was launched in 2009, and potentially at least an updated version of our local land inventory and housing needs analysis in order to prove up on that. And so, I mean, there certainly is a path there to potentially make moves. But again, we are currently sitting on a large tract of land. I know one of the items that Mr. Stewart's gonna bring later is the water master plan, water system master plan. And so, we'll come down the pipe later. It's my understanding from those master plans that we'll actually get updated figures on what it might take. If you're familiar with the topography of that property on the south end of town, there is some portion on the northern end of it that could be gravity served for sanitary sewer. Water's obviously a much easier animal to deal with because it's pressurized, but more sanitary. You've gotta have gravity for most part of the year. You've gotta go to a lift station. Lift station will be required, more than likely, on the southern end of that property because it's about 20 feet or South Sixth Street, which would be there's actually there. There's a small hill between that and South Fourth Street, where there's a 10-inch sanitary main. So certainly, you know, the master plan process will inform some of those capital improvements, which I think would then get to what Counsel Irvin mentioned about, okay, what can we do infrastructure-wise potentially to support? We just gotta wait for some of these on, to understand that. That said, when staff has had the opportunity to discuss with potential developers, we're always trying to request to, for ourselves and their department.
And then one final thing is I wanted to put out there that I wouldn't support the tax imposed on new development and expansion as a percent of permit value.
Counselor Mary Day.
Thank you, Mayor. What jumped out at the report to me was the maintaining, not losing our affordable housing through decay. So rehabilitating affordable units, renovating or even possibly considering acquisition of them. That was, you know, that would be a huge loss. No, there was, I've heard, I'm not positive that the mobile home part north of town is possibly being the past ownership and there's ongoing changes. That might be just a rumor. So, but anyway, that really came out in the report is don't lose what we have. And I know if you look at Jefferson Apartments, Witherspoon Court, Riverview Terrace, all those units were built through public agents, agency. And if we, anything we can do to encourage that again? Also putting a few teeth in the MUPD so we get a greater public benefit, particularly on long-lasting affordable units would be my recommendations.
If I may, Mayor, Counsel, just to follow up on the R1 step-down mentioned by Counsel Flick. So at the work session on Friday, discussed a slight modification to where if the adjacent zone, that R2 zone adjacent to R1, if they wanted to build at the same max height allowed in R1, would that be something counsel like us to pursue drafting movements to amend that? Because currently, right now, regardless, you have to, regardless of height, you have to start stepping off because you're in that higher zone. Would counsel consider?
Would that be a type 3?
It would be, my initial thought was just to make it be part of, well, back up a step. One of the other proposals that was not in the affordable housing and the location plan that we went through on Friday was to amend the code to say that we would not be doing site design review for multifamily development anymore. We would take that as an administrative item. Still be a site designer review, of course, but in the sense of clear and objective standards. We tell them they need to do X, Y, Z. If they demonstrate that they can, then we permit that through a type 2 process instead of a type 3. That would allow us to review things like building, of course, much like we do single-family dwellings, which is really an actual over-the-counter permit. It's a mystery.
Could we do it as a conditional use? I'm just thinking, you know, this sort of thing, I would want to have the planning commission weighing in on and the folks that are getting the, you know, the signs around the property a chance to weigh in. That, that's one of those quality of life things Counsel Irvin was mentioning that I do think, you know, isn't always as clear and objective. And so if there's a mechanism where we could do that, where it was still under review, I would be supportive.
Likewise. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Monken.
All right, moving on. Number nine, business from the city manager. Cottage Grove Garbage Service, right?
Do we have concerns of counsel?
Oh, concerns of counsel.
Oh, thank you. Madam Mayor, finally. So I'm not gonna speak about any specific situation or case with community sharing, which I'm the director of, but I do want to explain our process and the rules in general. So our agency is a subcontractor of Lane County. Lane County is required to provide programs. We are not. We do absolutely make every effort to serve all of our clients. But as folks can imagine, we do have some folks that have some challenges. And once those challenges cross the line of threats, intimidation and those sorts of things, you know, there's a process where we have consultation and we have some expectations of minimum expected behavior. And if folks are unable to achieve those, it can result. And our paperwork all says on it, you know, failure to follow these rules can lead to, up and into, including termination. We typically do not try to deny the service, but access to the property and a method to keep everyone there safe. We are obligated to keep our clients, our volunteers and our staff safe. And if there are folks presenting threats, we are obligated to stop those from occurring on our property. I will say that over the years, we've certainly done our best. Our goal is not to be punitive but corrective. And folks, if they're able to establish good behaviors, can be welcomed back depending on the circumstances. And like I said, I'm not gonna talk about any particulars, but in our trespass letter, it does list all of the, all of the available services and the other agencies that provide them. So, you know, folks can be welcome to go to the county directly or to another agency as well. You know, we do our best to serve our community, and I'm really proud of our agency. And so I just felt compelled to say that without going into any specifics. Thank you.
Counselor Mary Day.
I just attended the executive, the board meeting of the Lane workforce and was getting to know that agency. That was one of my committee assignments. And I was very happy to see that they have a huge emphasis on guiding youth to apprentice and also other training programs to the trades. That was, I know a lot of, a lot of contractors are desperate for skilled labor and that was very reassuring to hear that. Also a member of the bike and pedestrian planning group. And we had our first meeting where we learned the parameters. There is a great way for people to give input into comments on the pedestrian and bike plan, and it is walkbikecg.com. And so it will be out there to, you can give input. It also, there'll be public meetings to accept input personally or you can give a letter. I did raise one perception issue. I'm sure our citizens are concerned on the state of the road bed and what we're gonna fix the road, fix it up for bikes and pedestrians, but not the roads. Well, actually, from what I gathered from the meeting, it's, we're accessing funds that would not be available in, through traditional, for traditional roadwork. And so these would be in addition. And I also pointed out the pothole spotter, which I've used repeatedly to repair potholes that I hit on my bicycle repeatedly, unfortunately. Unfortunately, not that the pothole exists, that I just failed to remember where it was. So, but if you hit it enough, you'll report it. So that's, we're some good, good meetings.
Anyone else? Counselor Irvin.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody for bearing with the bad audio tonight. And have this opportunity to be down in Salt Lake City at the Other Side Academy, which is for, there's on-site here. Standing in the dorms with 107 men and women who are criminally, you know, charged to be here, but it's a, it's a kind of a second chance or sometimes beyond that to redirect behaviors and vocational training to get them integrated. We've got some pretty cool stuff going on here, so I hope to share some of what's going on. And they have the highest-rated boobing service in Utah, as well as the highest-rated retail thrift stores and storage units. And it's all being done with mostly formerly incarcerated, criminally addicted individuals. They just got a great system here. So I hope to bring back some positive news there. I think I want to address what I, what I think is dangerous and harmful messaging to young men that I heard from Lane County Public Health. The assertion that males in general are the oppressors in society, I think is doing damage in our culture and our, in our young men and potentially even leading to worse outcomes with dealing with who, with our, you know, with ourselves. And so I know I have a couple of young men listening and I would, I would say, you know, don't, keep going, keep driving, keep striving for what is right and good and can do it with strong moral ethic. And don't buy into the narrative that you are an oppressor. That's all I got. Thanks.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Now, business from the city manager. Cottage Grove Garbage Service rate increase request. Staff report, still by Mr. Boone.
Evening, Ms. Mayor, Counsel. So the city received a document that you have in your packet from Cottage Grove Garbage Service requesting a 7.6% rate increase to be effective April 1st, 2023, for solid waste services. Included in the document is a comparison of current and proposed rates, a profit and loss summary, and service statistics. The last rate increase request was in November of 2018, and the current rates have been in effect since January 1st, 2019. The reason for the increased request is directly related to increased prices for materials, labor, dumping fees and other operational costs. A representative from Cottage Grove Garbage Service is here and is available to answer questions regarding the proposed rate increase. Now, in the past, the council has considered the solid waste rate increases by either reviewing and discussing the rates at the council meeting and then instructing staff to prepare a resolution for the next meeting to adopt a new rate schedule, or by appointing an ad hoc committee to review the rate request and then bring a recommendation back to the council for further action. So it is staff's recommendation that the city council consider the request and decide whether to direct staff to prepare a resolution to adopt the proposed rates or to appoint a committee to review the proposal and bring a recommendation to the council for action.
Counselor Flick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's interesting because over the years, I've, I've served, as Tim can attest, I've served on these committees. I remember Doug Perkey, one of my former folks on this council, definitely always had a sharp pencil and looked at the bottom line, and as do I. I will tell you, I know in my organization, when I look at the wages that have gone up in the, you know, recent history, that I actually find this proposal to be very justified. You know, I mean, I appreciate the comments from the, from the audience about, you know, the impact on the rate payer, but I also have to look at the provider's impact. I mean, gosh, consumables have gone up, our labor's gone up. The cost of doing business has just absolutely gone up. And I think this is a very modest proposal, you know, given those increases. So I'm supportive of doing it directly, although if the, if the council wants to do a committee, I think that, you know, we certainly could do that. But I, I think we'll get to the same place, that this is a reasonable request. So that's kind of my consensus.
Counselor Stennett.
Thank you. If it's appropriate, I'd like to ask Mr. Alberson, do we have, do you have mechanisms to, to help people experiencing hardship with their, with their bills? How is that, how is that handled by the garbage service? Folks that are, folks that may be having trouble with their bills?
Well, we're obviously very flexible in working with folks in regards to making, you know, making payment arrangements if they're unable to pay. However, you know, the rates are established by the city council. I believe in the franchise agreement. There's, there's no preferential pricing. We don't provide a different price to somebody that's struggling to pay their bill. I mean, the rates are, are the rates, so.
But the leeway, the leeway is there for someone who's?
Part A.
The leeway is there, you'd say, though, for someone who is?
So the only flexibility we have is working with them in terms of, you know, making payment arrangements. But, you know, I can't alter the rate that's been approved by the council. Franchise prohibits.
I wouldn't ask you to. I just, you know, just the ability to, to someone who's going through a hardship.
Well, like I said, I mean, I, you know, if somebody's paying X, I can't change it to Y.
Sure. Does it happen very frequently that you need to do that?
We have very little problem with non-payment, so.
Counselor Savage.
Thank you so much. I fully support making the change tonight, and I'll tell you why. Gas prices have gone. Gas prices have gone up tremendously. As you said, consumables have gone up. I think of all the different, gosh, you go out and buy a piece of wood in the middle of the pandemic, and it costs three times what it did before the pandemic. The last rate change was done in 2019. This seems absolutely reasonable and absolutely modest. It's not very much at all. It, it does create a strain for people on a fixed income. I get that. That's not what we can address, though. I'm looking at the business owner trying to make ends meet, so I would fully support this going through tonight.
And if you'd like, I can give you some examples. For example, you know, you mentioned, you know, prices have significantly increased. So in 2021, our fuel bill was $85,000 per year. In 2022, it was almost $140,000. Truck tires, we paid about $15,000 in 2021. 2022 was $34,000. A lot of this, a lot of these pricings, in particular, like truck tires, have to do with supply chain issues, you know? Supply dried up, and prices shot really low. But, you know, like an individual, we consume an array of goods and services, and we're the service that we provide to the community, and unfortunately, I don't have control over 99% of it.
A constituent brought up tonight the neighboring cities of our size and what our comparables are.
Obviously, I always do an analysis, and I look at everybody in the lay shed, and I know the gentleman made a comment that he looked at a couple of similar sized communities and the prices were rather. Actually, I'm not sure what cities he looked at. For example, in the package that I provided in the proposal, I, I showed the city of Florence, which is probably the best comparison, and it's a similar size population that has a hauler. For example, our 35 gallon weekly rate is currently 2060. Our proposed is 2220, and the city of Florence is currently 30 dollars and 15 cents, excuse me, $30 and 15 cents per month. Eugene is 2465, higher than our proposed rate. City of Prescott is from 350, higher than our proposed rate. So, once again, I'm not sure what cities the gentleman was referring to there. We'll check the rates.
Counselor Irvin.
Can we get a pressure on, on what is the arrangement that necessitates garbage service coming to us to ask to raise rates? Because for most of the private businesses, they want.
Yeah, I, I quoted the, the, some of the, the terms or the city ordinance and the franchise agreement in the proposal. Specifically, and I noted that, in the franchise agreement, it says a reasonable return to the franchisee for doing business based on a percentage of the gross proceeds. That's on page eight of the franchise agreement. That's ordinance number 243. What we've agreed, and this was probably more than 20 years ago, what a reasonable rate of return is, is 11, 11% margin. And as a comparison, the city of Eugene allows an 11% margin. It's another similar sized municipality. The city of Newport, rates are built on a 12% margin.
Have the ability to operate within the city of Cottage Grove based on a franchise agreement? That the city agrees and can target 11% profits to maintain an operation here, I guess, competition? And these proposals, and these proposed rates getting back to 11%, as of right now?
I couldn't understand what you're saying.
So I think if I can kind of paraphrase and just nod there, Counselor Irvin, your, your audio is a little, little wonky. I think what he's looking at is the, you know, free market as opposed to the franchise agreement, and so he was kind of summing up that, you know, to, you know, the franchise agreement outlines an 11%, you know, profit margin, and in, to have the ability to be the exclusive, you know, provider in the town, is what he was saying. And, and we did this, gosh, do you remember, Mr. Myers? It's been a number of years, but we had a huge comparison of the cities who have a franchise agreement with the ones who do it. And the one thing that I remember that really struck out is if you have multiple people all buying the same equipment, that the cost, you know, potentially goes up because, you know, now you've created all the capital, you know, costs. That was just one piece that I remember kind of swayed me to stay with the franchise agreement. But if that's, if that's what you were going with, Counselor Irvin, I'm, I'm hopeful.
And, and I could take it a step further as well. In the state of Oregon, the municipalities are responsible to DDQ for the solid waste collection. And so having multiple haulers then complicates the whole thing for us, because all of them then would be a franchise. We then oversee that operation, and then we're ultimately responsible to DDQ. That's why some jurisdictions provide garbage service themselves. Their rates are still quite comparable, or the same, or some of them higher than what we have. Doing it with one provider, because of our size, I mean, it requires certain pieces of equipment, and, you know, one of the new trucks is $450,000. If you've got two haulers in the city, then buying the same pieces of equipment, your price is not going to be there wherever you would want it to be. Florence used to have that problem. There used to be two haulers in Florence, but the one couldn't continue to operate because it just didn't work having two haulers.
So in that, you know, and the example of the city of Florence, if you actually looked at their current rates, which I put aside, beside our proposed and our, and our current rates, they're significantly higher, and it simply was because there was two haulers at one time, and they, you know, two haulers just, they just didn't have the economy scaled. You've got two haulers serving a small municipality, their costs were significantly higher, and in turn, the rates were significantly higher.
Anyone else?
Counselor Irvin, did I capture your comments?
I really just wanted to know if this proposal gets them back up to 11%.
Does this, does this proposal get you back up to 11%?
Well, it, it, on an annualized basis, yes. For the current year, no, obviously. Once again, I pointed out in the proposal that with, with, with the 7.6% increase effective 4/1, we're already, we're already 25% into the year, so we're hopeful that we'll hit a 9.4% margin for 2023. Annualized, yes. Looking at 11%.
So I guess with that, barring any other comments, I guess that I will recommend that we request the city staff to prepare a resolution to adopt the proposed rates at our future meeting, I'll just say. Do we need a motion on that?
Yes.
So I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Second. Will the recorder please call the roll? Or do we don't? We don't need it? Okay. All right, so.
So do we need to, do, those in favor?
Oh, those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Oh, motion carries.
No, any opposed.
Oh, any opposed, sorry. Motion carries. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
All right. Item B, approval of West Yoss Task Work Order 2023-2 for engineering service for Cottage Grove to perform the water system master plan. Staff report by Public Works based on it.
Thank you, Mayor. So the current water mass, system master plan for the city of Cottage Grove was completed by Baltimore Consulting, Inc., May of 1998. Plan was approved by the Oregon Health Authority for a 20-year timeframe expiring in 2018. In July of 2022, city staff prepared a request for proposal, soliciting proposals for developing master plans for drinking water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater drainage system for the city. Proposals were due and received on August 31st, 2022. City received one proposal from West Yoss. Staff reviewed the proposal and determined, determined it to be responsive to the RFP. West Yoss is currently the city engineer of record for water wastewater projects for the city. As such, it was determined to proceed issuing approval to use West Yoss under our current city engineer of record contract. West Yoss has prepared a proposal for creating the water system master plan. West Yoss has 13 task items proposed for creation of the master plan, and they are: Review all current available data pertaining to the water treatment and distribution systems; complete the band analysis; supply analysis; hydraulic model; evaluate the service extension into the UGB, the urban growth boundary; water treatment plant evaluation; existing and future water system evaluation; asset evaluation; seismic risk assessment and mitigation planning requirements; prepare a capital improvement plan, and then complete a prepared master plan report. West Yoss is proposing a baseline project hours and budget to not exceed $291,298, provided task item number 10 required by the Oregon Health Authority, the proposed hours and budget of, including item number 10, the task order would not exceed $347,292. Just to explain a little bit about the, the task 10 is the seismic analysis requirements. The Gogami, the Department of Geology and mine industries, has prepared a geological report for the Cottage Grove area for our hazards mitigation plan, and the report shows that the risk through our area is somewhat less than the surrounding areas. And so the question's been posed to the Oregon Health Authority that we could build off that report and be able to submit a lesser degree of information regarding the assessment of seismic to our facilities. They are interested, but they weren't able to say yes until they received more information, so that will be provided, provided we don't need to submit anything additionally beyond that, the task order would be the $291,298. Funding for the water master plan is in the approved budget presently and will be paid out through the water system development fees. The project is projected to be completed in late December 2023 or January of 2024. So the recommendation from staff to city council is to move to approve the task order 2023-2 for the proposal from West Yoss for engineering services to perform the water master plan in the amount not to exceed $347,292, and authorize the city manager to sign the task report.
Counselor Flack.
If there isn't any conversation, I will move that the council approved Task Work Order 2023-2 for the proposal from West Yoss for engineering services to perform, perform the water master plan in the amount not to exceed $347,292, and authorize the city manager to sign the task work order.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Report from the city manager.
Just a couple things to remind you about, the Lain Council Government's Dinner on Saturday at the Armory, so if you haven't registered, we have some people that have registered. If you haven't yet, let us know, and we'll get you registered. Or you can go online and do it too, but if you do, it can call us, and we can get you registered. Then we also have the League Spring Conference that has open registrations, and I know we have a couple that have, that they're interested. If anyone else is interested, please let us know, and we'll get that taken care of. We also mentioned before the March 11th meeting, we'd like to move that, the work session on Saturday, for our goal setting start, looking at calendars, moving it into April. The first Saturday that it looks like we would be available to try to do that would be the 29th, towards the end of April. Does that work for everyone, or do we need to look at a different?
29th of April, you said?
And so the spring conference is the 25th, 26th?
Right.
Oh, that's.
No.
No, it's April.
It's April.
It's April.
No, yeah, it's April the 25th and 26th, yes.
Okay. So I am available on the 29th.
Is that going to create a challenge? I'm not, I'm not caring for the 29th.
Just make sure we're back. 29th of April? Yeah, he's in.
What's the current date, so I can just move that?
March 11th.
Thank you.
So if you just move March 11th to the 29th of April, we'll check with Counselor Drur, make sure that's okay too, and hopefully we make that work.
Remind me what's up.
This is the goal work session.
All right.
Still 8 to 12?
Or sooner.
Business from the city attorney.
Hi, guys. We've already heard from me tonight, and in the training, I mentioned that I'll be here at 8:30 a.m. Friday to be discussing, I believe, with the assistant manager, the council rules, and I'm not sure that we have really clear understanding of what, what you all want to do in that meeting, other than be here to talk about council rules. You have a lot of material that has been provided to you approximately a month ago regarding. Oh, okay. All right. So the large packet was kind of a lot of context around council rules, and this evening then you received, and what, the last draft showing track changes, the track changes, yeah. But, you know, that can be tossed out, we can start over. Nobody, I think, has a vested interest, but I'm happy to talk about the earliest history on Friday, and then let you direct staff, ask questions as you want to. So I think it's a pretty open agenda, unless they care otherwise, and I think it's scheduled for two hours. I don't need to take that full time, but you probably will. Other than that, legislature is in session. I know that this, city officials are very well tied into the state of Oregon city, so you're probably as well, if not better informed than I am in terms of what's been introduced, the legislation that could affect cities. I tend to pay a little more attention later in the session, when either things have passed, and I need to tell you what to get prepared for. I can tell you that you are the only city that is ready for July 1st, 2023, in terms of homelessness, on that 5, 5 to 30. And, but I will keep you up to date, or can respond to questions with regard to this, this legislative session. I think that's all for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Items removed from consent agenda. And now it looks like we're going into executive session. So, executive session, so this meeting is adjourned?
Nope.
No, no adjourned meeting.
No.
We're just going into.
Oh, we're going into executive and then. Executive session pursuant to Oregon 192660.
And you have the paragraph to read. And you have the paragraph to read.
Basically says...
Oh, hold on. I do. Thank you.
Looks like you've lost.
Yeah. Have they both this...
There's two of them. So, there's difference. So, make sure you get them one through the first one.
Here it is. You highlighted it for me, too. The city council for Cottage Grove will now meet in executive session to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192660, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consult with council... Do I need to read all this? Okay. With council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session.
So, I'm just going to clarify for the record. The initial ORS, I think I heard something about exempt records, discuss records exempt from public disclosure. That's not a basis for this executive session. It is only 1926602H to consult with council regarding legal rights and duties regarding current litigation. Just for clarity.
So, we do have some people that do need to leave. We have Riley on with the Chronicle. She can stay in the executive session. Yep, it's on. So, thank you for the direction, and we'll come back to you with more specifics when we sit down with the union and negotiate out the impact of lateral hires and retain them, bonuses to try to get more laterals. One of the other issues that we found in looking at the lateral and the police officer positions is we're looking at the chief position. We've kind of regrouped and reassessed the direction we were going. We've gone to try to get a captain in first and then get the chief. We've determined that we want to go, we're going to go do the chief right away. To do the chief, we've looked at the salary. This current salary for the chief is... The low end of the salary is $8,254 a month. The high end is $10,534 a month. We've done a little salary survey that has 17 cities in it. The... And I'm just going to look at the high end, just because it's easier that way. The market average for the high end of a police chief, and this is including Eugene and Baker City. And I'll explain what that means in a minute. The high end is $12,510 a month for a police chief. Now, there's some differences associated with PERS. Some cities don't pick up the PERS 6%. We don't, but most of the cities do. And then there's differences on VIBA, and there's differences on deferred comp. And for the most part, this difference kind of stays the same even with those. So, just looking at the salary. Eugene's salary for a police officer, their high end is... Where'd it go? Yeah, we're not going to get to that. So, pull that out of that list of 17. The other one we need to pull out is Baker City. Baker City has a high end for their police chief at $7,544. That's Baker City. That's clear over in the middle of nowhere. Pulling those two out, that gives us a market average, and it doesn't really change it much, but the market average for police chief position at the high end is $12,498. So, pulling those two high ones out doesn't change the average much. It actually raises it... No, it lowers it $12, pulling those two out. So, with that information, I'd like to put together and bring a resolution at the next council meeting to adjust the police chief's salary to match closer to this number and bring in... Actually, increase the low end by about $1,600. So, $1,600. So, that would raise the low end of the salary to $9,854, and it would raise the high end of the salary to $12,572 a month. That gets us right into that market range. We are competing with... Our comparables are a little lower than that, but we're competing with Springfield. We're competing with Provalus. We're competing with Grovesburg, which are in the $12,000, $13,000 range. So, being just a little lower than those is going to give us some benefit, especially since, well, actually, we're a little higher than our other jurisdictions. Florence, for example, their salary at the high end is $11,330. But they pick up... No, they do not pick up the PERS. But at the end, their total salary and compensation is $14,415, and we're only at $13. So, by doing a higher salary, we're making up for some of those things that Florence does on other ends of their package. And it makes that a little more comparable. That's what I'd like to bring and adjust that. We'll have some more numbers. Some of our small cities that are our size didn't respond yet. So, we've got some more that we can look at. But I'm looking at that $12,000. We did just have recruitment for Madras. Madras' wages, theirs starts at $8,674 and goes to $11,902. So, being $12,000, Madras is only a population of $7,000. We're $10,700. So, there's definitely some differences there, but it puts us in a good range to get that there. The one thing I do want to caution you, make this adjustment, then we're going to have to look at others. I'm going to wait and look at those in June or July, because they'll be in the budget. But this one, we want to get the recruitment out as quickly as we can and get the chief on. And then we'll be looking at our other department heads because if we're raising the police chief, then we're going to have to raise Public Works, Finance, and those positions.
It usually falls in line with that? Okay.
So, I will put the resolution together for the next meeting, and we'll probably start putting together a package for recruitment for the chief so we can get that out as fast as we can and see if we can get something going on, hopefully, before the end of this meeting. And just like you said, I do know where it's coming out of, but I don't... I don't know what we'll do. We do have our contingency in the general fund. That's going to bring my budget in, and I didn't. But we do have a contingency in the general fund. That's probably where a lot of that's going to come from. We do have some savings that have started hitting us now as well from some of the vacant positions as well. So, that will help. That's all I have.
So, meeting adjourned?